Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Zebulon Board of Commissioners' work session, May 9, 2024. First, we will need the approval of the agenda.
Shall we approve the agenda?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Motion passes. Proposed budget 2025. Do you move?
Mayor and members of the board, I present to you tonight the FY25 budget, just an outline of the things that we'll cover. First of all, I'll review quickly the statutory requirements. State statutes do dictate a process and a schedule associated with the budget. And in keeping with that, I'll provide a schedule and a process for your budget consideration and approval process. And then I'll get into some highlights on the budget message, which is printed out for you. And Bobby's going to go ahead and hand that out for you all. So as far as the statutory requirements, there is a general statute 159 that oversees, again, the process and the schedule. So sometime before April 30th, each of the departments have to submit their operating capital budget. And we met both of those deadlines internally. January 31st is when we received the operating budget, and March 1st is when we received the capital budget. The other schedule and process associated with the budget approval is not later than June 1st. A budget and a budget message gets presented to the governing board at the same time that it gets presented to the community. And so that is happening tonight. Before adopting a budget ordinance, hold a public hearing, so that is scheduled for June 3rd. And then sometime not later than July 1st, adopt a budget ordinance. And there's your budget, schedule, and process. So tonight, the budget message is being presented to you. You'll have a work session on the 15th, another one on the 21st, a public hearing on the 5th. And then you'll be in a position, having satisfied all the statutory requirements, to adopt a budget ordinance on June 5th. If you go past June 5th, my recommendation is that you have another public hearing. What you don't want to have happen is after the community has seen you deliberate, and then you have a public hearing to change that budget, and that give them the opportunity to comment on it. That, however, is not statutorily required to have a second public hearing. That's just a recommendation. One of the things in the statutes as part of the budget message is to, quote, "provide goals and features of the budget." And so when it comes to goals, we always follow our strategic plan with our three focus areas. From that strategic plan, we have developed implementation plans. These are the features that feature, excuse me, into your budget. Examples of the plans that disseminated from your strategic plan is you have, the board has adopted a comprehensive land use plan, transportation plan, parks and recreation master plan, to name a few. So focusing on the focus areas in the budget message and the FY25 budget that's being presented to you. First, in the area of vibrant downtown, the goals of the vibrant downtown focus area are to revitalize your downtown and to attract people, both as visitors and residents, to your downtown. Hurdles associated with that is the development costs. Specifically, these buildings have not been tended to for a long time. And so they have a lot of internal improvements that need to be made. A lot of times also what happens is, in addition to the expensive upfit to the buildings to meet current fire, building, and access code requirements, is what's underground. And so one of the things that we've got in this FY25 budget is to do an assessment, particularly of the sewer infrastructure. We've had quite a few retrofits of existing buildings run into some significant sewer problems well outside of the pro forma or the development costs of those property owners. And so we're going to do an assessment of where the sewer system is, what is the condition, and get some kind of assessment on what kind of improvements need to be made in the downtown area so we can help facilitate some of these redevelopment opportunities with the aging buildings. The other thing is, we don't have any public space, no public squares or plazas. We have taken over-
An activated alleyway.
We do have some alleys that we've taken over. But by and large, we're using a public right-of-way to attract people downtown. So this FY25 budget includes numerous amount of special events. We have as many as 17 that the town is sponsoring. And that doesn't count any of the private events that go on when a business is using an alley, as an example, and we have to provide some sort of operational oversight. And then the last thing is, eventually, the downtown area is going to require some specialized attention above and beyond what you provide as service to the rest of the town. And so this is an opportunity to consider a special taxing district, using this as an example of the boundary. And so the FY25 budget also includes municipal service district feasibility study. In the growing smart focus area, goals are to have the transportation and the land use coordinated with each other. So most specifically, when the land use is transitioning over from farmland to residential developments, the transportation system that's needed to support that land use is different. And so this FY25 budget continues to have transportation improvements in it. The money to construct the intersection of Shepherd School and Old Bun, as shown in the top-right corner, that's included in this, and I think the battery just went dead. But in the upper-right corner is the construction plans for Shepherd School and Old Bun. This also includes, depending upon if you pass the bond referendum or the authorization to apply for a bond referendum, will also include construction funds for the widening improvements to North Arrendal. Staffing, I'll get to that in a minute. But this budget includes the addition of not only staff, but also to address some market issues that are going on with the existing staff that we've got. And I'll get into a little bit more detail about that in a minute. And then we also have deferred expenses. We're seeing that, most notably in our park system. And you'll see on the right, there's a pedestrian bridge connecting Barbie Street to Zebulon Community Park. And obviously, while a tree took out that bridge, this bridge was due to be replaced anyway, and there's one further upstream. So we've got a number of examples where we've got deferred expenses within our parks system that need to be tended to. Let me focus a little bit on the people part, as I alluded to. So in FY25 proposed budget, you'll see these positions that are included. I'll get into a little bit more of a breakdown near the end of the presentation, talking about why these were recommended, and while some of the other positions that were requested by department directors were not included. But let me touch on at least a couple of things. So in the FY24 budget, we had an engineer position that proved to be very difficult to find an engineer. this position. That has a ramification, as was mentioned at the work session, that once you move these positions up to a more competitive starting salary, they start to bump up, not only through the police organization, but also into the organization as a whole. So I'll toggle back. This starting salary and adjustment to salary for a captain is shown right there, okay? And when you compare that adjustment of a captain in the police department to department directors, and department directors, what they are making is shown in yellow. You've got a couple of problems that are introduced. One is, you have a captain that's making more than several department directors. But also, when you take a look at the market, the labor shed, you'll see that some of our salaries are actually below what the low end is. So red represents the low end of the market, and green represents the high end of the market for these respective positions. So we've got a compression problem here when we adjust the police salaries, how that makes more than some directors. We also have some market conditions about what people are making with respect to their peers. One thing to make of note of why that's important, why it's relevant, of the eight department directors here, and this is just my informal approximation of their years of service, I would say that probably five of them could retire immediately, if not immediately within the year. If they do choose to retire, you're going to enter into a market to replace them, so you will not be able to find someone with the current salaries as they are. So that's a thing to take into account with the consideration of the FY25 budget. And then the last area I want to point out, these are three vacancies over here. So these are positions for, I think it's IT Director, Assistant Town Manager, and I can't remember what the third one is. But being able to hire people for these positions, as we've experienced with the engineer position, is also going to be dependent upon having a competitive salary. So those are included as far as considerations in the FY25 budget.
This is a very difficult graphic for me to wrap my head around. You're going to need to spin this in some other way and get this back to us at our next budget session, please. Thank you.
The next area I want to focus on regarding not only recruitment, but also retention, I'll focus on our planning department. So planning department amongst all the departments within the organization tends to be highly skilled, specialized education set. And I think this is a good illustration of points. So if you take a look on the left, that's an assessment of our recruitment labor shed.
This is just for the planning department?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you look at the key over here, what we're looking at is, so if we are attracting someone from a city or we're losing someone from a city, that's shown in red. And it's shown in red because if we're able to attract someone from a city, they have the skill sets that means needs to be a planner in a municipal setting. If we attract someone from a county, while they do have some land use skills, land planning in counties are different than land planning in municipalities. Municipalities are more geared to how do you acquire land and develop. Counties are more, how do you preserve and protect and give away that land? And then if we're able to attract someone from consulting, while they might have some skills in planning, it's minimal as far as how does that relate or convey to a municipal setting. And then if we're able to pull someone who's a recent graduate, obviously, they have the degree, but they don't have much experience. So that's kind of the framework of what I'm talking about, what I'm about to share with you on recruitment and retention. So right now, we're successful in recruiting in a few areas. One, pulling people from county organizations, pulling some people from city organizations. Those city organizations, they tend to be a culture thing that they're looking to get away from, or they're looking for some sort of opportunity to get into a growing municipality where they can have more experiences. And then we've got quite a few people coming from different schools, even one from out of state. They had local ties here, but they did graduate out of state. So we're being really successful in getting people to come from the east. We're getting some people looking to elevate up from cities, as well as coming from schools. Once they get here, after a certain amount of time, they then start to transition out, and they transition out to the western part, which is much more competitive salaries. We're losing them to cities, again, that have higher salaries, but also opportunities to develop their skill sets. In some cases, we are losing them to county. Those tend to be more personal life decisions, get closer to family, reduce travel time. The point I'm trying to make is, in a labor shed, specifically in this case, planning, where you're trying to recruit and retain people, the salary that you're able to offer does make an impact on where you recruit from and how you hold on to the people that you've got.
Jeff, I'm sorry, can I stop you? Because I'm confused.
Yep.
Can you go back to the slide before that? These are what department? Is this overall? I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Yeah. These are all department directors.
For each department?
Yes.
And then the next page, you're referring to a specific department or the same thing?
This is just planning. This is planning over, I would say, over a four-year period of time, where we've attracted people from and where we've lost people to.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and then moving into the last focus area, small town life. Again, the goals are to increase walkability, but also increase connectedness. So walkability really is pedestrian feel. How do you address the gaps between neighborhoods, gaps between neighborhoods and parks, gaps between neighborhoods and commercial areas? The connectedness speaks more to neighbors getting to know each other and getting engaged through programming, through parks and recreation, maybe even through more formal methods like our Citizens Academy or Police Academy. There's a picture of that on the right. And so this FY25 budget continues with that civic engagement programming, as well as athletics and recreation program. We are starting the design of the first phase of Little River Park, and also, we have put into the FY25 budget for you to begin acquisition of properties related to your master plan. Per statutes, I need to share with you the changes in the revenue and expenditures. So I'll go through this really quickly and just highlight a few things. So the top line under both FY24 budget and the FY25 budget is you have a considerable amount of your revenue coming from property tax. That underlines the importance of not only continuing to develop the land that you've got, but develop it in a smart way. The property tax rate remains the same as last year. Put an asterisk next to the 57.5 cents because it's my obligation, per statutes, to share with you what the revenue neutral rate is, and I'll go through that in a minute. The last thing I'll highlight here is the other revenue streams here that you see, sales tax, restricted tax. A restricted tax is an example, like gas tax, like that comes from the state government and can only be used for streets, as an example. You don't generate a lot of money there, relatively speaking, and it doesn't change greatly. So it just underlines further the importance of redeveloping land that you've got and developing it in a smart way. Let me talk about the revenue neutral tax rate. So I mentioned this at the work session last month, but just a reminder, while it is required to share what the revenue neutral statement is, adopting that as your rate is not required. There's a couple of problems that uniquely hit the town of Zebulon, how the statutory equation doesn't really well or represents what your revenue neutral rate is. One is that it assumes that the property value growth is positive and it's constant, and your property value growth fluctuates greatly each year because of how much is tied up in your personal property taxes, specifically with big taxpayers like GSK and BB&amp;T Truist. It also assumes that the initial revenue that you had, the tax rate, was sufficient. And so I'll share with you a repeat of what I talked about last month, how we went through that period of about seven years of, quote, "doing more with less," and how that really stifled and hurt the existing staff that you've got. At the end of the day, you'll look to set the rate that Zebulon needs by focusing on your strategic plan and goals. Understand that your tax base is exceptionally different. So what I mean exceptionally different, I mean of the 550 or so municipalities in the state of North Carolina, there's maybe five who have a similar tax base to you. The tax, the revenue neutral tax equation, I think probably works well for those 545. It does not necessarily work well for the handful that have the tax bases that you have. So I'll go through a couple of assumptions. Just a reminder that real properties are revalued every year. That's the requirement. In Wake County, that revaluation occurs every four years. Personal properties, like equipment, vehicles, they're revalued every year. So if you are a municipality where a majority of your commercial, majority of your tax base is based on commercial, it's going to fluctuate every year. If you have a tax base where a majority is both commercial and it's dominated by a single or a couple of companies like GSK and BB&amp;T Truist, it fluctuates every year dramatically, as you've seen here. And we've even seen in this past four years where we've seen a lot of bouncing around. So you have a lot of highs, a lot of lows. They fluctuate every single year. From the period of 2009 to 2016, it took us that amount of period just to get equal to the tax revenue we were getting in 2009. So you bounce around quite a bit, and I will share with you how that makes an impact on the revenue neutral tax rate. So a real quick tutorial on the revenue neutral tax rate. You take a look at the property tax value for each of the fiscal years of the past four years. So under 2021, your tax value was 1,367.5 million, or 1.3 billion. In 2002, it was 1.5 billion. In 2023, it was 1.782 billion. And in 2024, it was 1.829 billion. And so what the statutes say is how you calculate that. You take a look at the tax value for each of those years, and you come up with the percent change from year to year. So the tax rate, the tax value change from '21 to '22 was 9.7, from '22 to '23 was 18.8, '23 to '24 was 2.6. You come up with an average annual increase of 10.4%, which seems dramatic. But when I hear Mike Clark report out on our population growth, when I hear Chris Ray talk about the amount of miles and the storm drain he needs to maintain, when I talk to Jackie Boykin about the street mileage in the area she has to cover, 10.4 is, does not adequately reflect the growth rate that we are experiencing. And I'll share with you why that's happening. But continuing off the equation, what the equation tells you to do is take a look at the value you would have gotten in 2024, which was 1.8 billion, multiply it by that percent increase. So that's 1.8 billion times 10.4%. And that comes, that gives you a new expected revenue that you would achieve. Then divide that amount, or multiply that amount by your current tax rate of 57.5 cents, and that gives you the revenue that you would have brought in. And so the equation says, take that 11.61 million, divide it by your new valuation, which is 2,552, and that is your statutorily required to report out revenue neutral tax rate, which is 45.4 cents. The reason that doesn't match well is that's not really your growth. What happens every year is BB&amp;T Truist and GSK, in GSK's case, they'll take a line off of production, and they will have flat or negative growth. And BB&amp;T, they have to replace their servers, very expensive equipment that completely depreciates within a five-year period of time. And if they hold, if they're not constantly replacing that, as they did this year, you'll see a 20% decline in the amount of property tax rate that they produce. So this section right here strikes me as a little flat from the actual growth in population and the demand of services that you're seeing. And that's because GSK in that period devalued what their property tax value was. And this year, very flat as well. Both GSK and BB&amp;T devalued, like went negative in the amount of taxes. And so when you take a look, when you take out the drops that GSK and BB&amp;T Truist pull into your tax base, and then appropriately or resultantly pull it down, you get a different growth rate. So really, I think your actual growth rate is closer to at least 13.1%, and I could probably scrub these numbers closer and get to a higher percent rate. When you look at your actual growth rate of 13.1 cent or 1%, your revenue neutral tax rate jumps up to 46.6 cents. I realize that was a lot of numbers. I went through it quickly, so I'll pause to see if you have any questions. All right, I'll continue. The other assumption that is faulty with the revenue neutral tax rate is it assumes that the original tax rate was sufficient. So we talked about this before, that from 2009 to 2015, you went through a more pronounced devaluation. The town did not help matters by also coupling that with a reduction in the property tax rate. So just FYI, if we're starting to lose value in our tax rate, I am not going to recommend to you to reduce your property tax rate. You'll be doing things like raising your property tax rate, and you also might need to consider closing services. So things like us maintaining the ramps at US 64, that would probably be a service that we stop. We stopped yard waste pickup. We closed the community center. In the most extreme cases, we get Wake County Sheriff's Department to help us patrol areas. So those are examples of what to do when your property values start to drop. But what you don't do is decrease the property tax rate. And so as I talked about at your work session, because of that, you lost a lot of revenue. And the damage that was done with this period of doing more with less is your streets started to dilapidate, which resulted in higher maintenance costs. You kept on to your fleet longer, and so the maintenance cost increased, and also had a lower reliability of responding and providing services. Our buildings got older, and we're experiencing some of that in some of the HVAC issues that we've got. We had adopted a Greenway master plan, but we had sidewalks that were stopped or went nowhere. And the downtown was literally imploding. We were losing value in our downtown. We had buildings that were collapsing, and so the property tax value within the downtown was crashing. And then we devalued people, meaning that we not only didn't hire people, but we kept their salaries stagnant. So I shared last month that if we had just increased the tax rate to keep the revenue neutral, the tax rate would have been at least six cents higher if we would have taken into account things like inflation, just keeping a moderate 3% increase per year. There was an 11 cent gap there. And that will factor into why I'm recommending the tax rate I am in a minute. We did and have increased taxes. Those largely went to capital improvements. We had a street system that was getting older and more costly to fix and maintain, and it was going to bankrupt us eventually. We had a downtown that was falling in on itself, and we needed to get that area to start re, are generating some revenue for us. And that was happening right at the time, as we started to, I won't call it exponential growth, I'll call it, quote, "exponential growth" because it's getting close, but it's not quite near. quite near that rate. So we're, we've got some money pits in the, in our streets and our buildings and our fleet and our downtown. At the same time, we've got competing interests where we need to hire a lot of people to serve more people that are coming into our community. So between the money pits and the competing interests, our staff was not getting, our existing staff was not getting tended to. Because when you bring someone new on, you are taken away from the ability to give the people that you've got a higher salary. So I'll summarize by saying again, the statement, not the rate, is statutorily required. And so the statutory equation, as I've said, produces a revenue neutral tax rate of 45.4 cents. When you add the property value growth factor that's affected by GSK and BBNT Truist, there's a 1.2 cent difference there. And the assumption that the initial revenue was sufficient adds another 11 cents. So when you add the 1.2 and the 11 to 45.4, you actually get 57.6. And so that's why I recommended keeping the tax rate consistent at 57.5 in your FY25 budget. Let me pause again to see if there's any questions or comments.
What does one cent increase amount to?
About 250,000.
250,000. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. As also statutorily required, I need to report out what the changes in the expenditures are between last year and this year. And I won't, I won't spend a lot of time on this. But just know that the, your budget has gone from 22 million to a 28.5 million dollar budget. 4 million, that is going to be dedicated to the Rendell Capital Project Fund that we've talked about, assuming you move forward the bond referendum. The operating costs for this organization have gone from 15.3 million to 19.5 million. It's a reflection of those additional services, those additional positions and market adjustments. The amount of capital and I'll, at the end, I'll give you some highlights of what to focus on, but we're spending more on capital improvements, roadways being an example of that. And we're not taking any new debt, not yet anyway, depending upon if you pass the bond referendum. So those are the changes on the expenditure side between last year and this year. And then I'll wrap up by talking about what each department has asked for and what was, what remained in and what came out. So first on public works, they had asked for a construction inspection coordinator. They had asked for a stormwater manager and they had asked for a project manager. Construction inspection coordinator, that was someone who could be dedicated to oversee the acceptance and maintenance of infrastructure when new developments close out and get turned over to the town for maintenance. Stormwater manager, the, the big push for that is we're responsible for our stormwater system. We received a notice of deficiency from the state of North Carolina, and so we need to have more dedicated resources on that infrastructure. Project manager is just a reflection that we really only have one capital project manager in this town. We're having more capital projects come online and we have the opportunity to have several going on at the same time. So that's the idea behind having the project manager in this budget. The request for property maintenance technician, equipment operator three, just want to spend some more time with this department, get a better understanding of their career ladder, as well as do a market study comparing their salaries with other similar positions in the labor shed. And then their request for the assistant director, that was actually modified down to the project manager. And when I'm talking to Chris, that's really where his most pressing need is, is for project manager help. I'm sure he would take assistant director, but the project manager is just a downscaled version of the assistant director. On the police side, the chief asked for two watch commanders and a detective as well as two police officers. Reason for keeping the watch commanders and the detective in, is she's looking to have more experience and extra assistance on, on those night shifts. On day shifts, when we have big demands, we can always empty out the police station and bring extra forces to bear, but we don't have that availability at night. The idea also is in keeping with our attempts to recruit staff, we tend to recruit officers with, that have less experience. And so putting more experienced personnel on those shifts also brings some oversight and assistance with that regard. As far as the detective, this is really the kickoff of that care initiative that you've heard us talk about on several occasions. And then the two police officers out, one of the concerns is we continue to add positions to the police department that were not proving successful in filling. And so we need to fix the pay issue first before we add yet two other vacancies. So the rationale is put more energy into increasing the starting pay of the police officers that we've got.
I have a question. For the detective, for this, would that detective be, will they have a specific shift? Would they be assigned a specific shift or will it be kind of like a, how would that work for this position?
I'm gonna let the chief talk about that.
For the detective position that, that is being requested, will that detective have a specific shift that they're going to be assigned to or will it be a rotating shift?
So one of the main objectives for this new detective will be to work with the social workers who are coming in. And the social workers will be primarily working an eight to five. Sometimes the people we need to service aren't available in the eight to five and we'll extend those hours into the evening hours. So I do see some flexibility in their scheduling. Most of our detectives work until six, seven o'clock each night already. So we would be working within like time hours for the most part, but I do see some shifting of schedules a bit. Are you looking for something in particular?
No, I was just asking because of the scope of the, the role in ensuring that, you know, the care and youth and different things. So I didn't know if the, the shift would like rotate based on the need or if it would just rotate so that they are able to cover different, different situations.
So just. Based on the need on a daily basis. When we were investigating the robbery, the detectives put in hundreds of hours over the course of four weeks and sometimes they were out till midnight. So it just kind of depends on the demand and what's going on at that time. But they're regularly flexing their hours, even though on paper they're eight to five.
Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you.
Chief, while you're there, can you refresh me like the, the ratio of one officer per, how many homes, 125 homes, 150 homes, recommendation? What is that?
Yeah, when you think about, what, 2.76 people living in a home, a, a general number to consider is for every 150 rooftops, we need to be looking at another cop.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Commissioner Baxter?
Thank you. And so the, the national trend seems to be, what, I think it's 2.3 officers per 1,000 residents. Is that, is that correct? I know that that is not going to translate what works for Zebulon, just because we have some unique situations. So how many police officers do we currently have?
We have 28 positions.
And that would be, that would fall into the 2.3 officers per 1,000 if we're considering 12,000 residents. But we have unique situations here in Zebulon that I think call for more officers than some other municipalities might have a need for. And so my concern is that we actually need to fund more police officers to keep Zebulon safe as opposed to just the two watch commanders and the one detective. Just gonna put that out there.
So we look at workload assessments and make evaluations, not only along the lines of what the average is nationally. It is very different across the United States. In the Northwest, it's 1.7, in the Southeast, it's 2.5. So you, you're right, we need to be looking at more than just what that is. So we evaluate our policing philosophy, calls for service, expected growth, and it ends up surprisingly coming out to be in that 2.5 range. But justified more off of the type of work that we expect our officers to be doing. So there, when we look at a staffing forecast for the next six years, we're constantly looking six years ahead, we're looking at needing to add three to five officers every year to keep pace with the expected growth. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
All right, moving on to parks and recreation, the request came in for program coordinator, facility maintenance technician, parks maintenance technician. There's actually a request for two parks maintenance technician. One of those has been kept out as well as a park planner. Rationale behind that, we are, as we saw last year with our athletics, we're seeing increased demand for more programming and quickly growing and diversifying population. The facility maintenance technician contracting that service out, it doesn't provide service for these episodic uses that we see. So if there's a big event, whether it's an athletics event or a party, contracted services that come by on a regular basis is not going to be able to pick up these big fluctuations that you see. We also have some concerns. We've got some remote facilities that, we've got some concerns that we're not keeping eyes on. And so contracted service is not something that they would see on a regular basis. Also, they are, at the end of the day, they're just too clean and then they move on. So that's the rationale behind the facility maintenance technician. And the parks maintenance technician is, as you saw with that bridge, our parks are continuing to get a lot of use. But also associated with our parks is the athletic preparation or athletic programming, while the programs have, have big time demands, preparing and breaking down after those events are having an impact as well. So that's the rationale behind what's in as far as what's out. The board really needs to have a conversation about purchasing parkland before we start to activate the skills and of a park planner to, on what to use that park property for. And then the park maintenance technician, just quite bluntly, is an opportunity to try to keep the, the budget balance and at least get one position in there to try to help Planning requests for a transportation planner too and a planning technician. Rationale for the planner too, we just need more concentrated attention to our site plan review to address these traffic issues that we're seeing. We also need more dedicated oversight on programming from a transit standpoint. You all are now for the first year getting into the transit program. You are going to be spending money on it, and so this is someone who can oversee that program, as well as someone that can get more active engaged, not only with Campo, but also other grant opportunities to help us with transportation funding. On the planning technician side, we realize some efficiencies that we've got. One of the things that happens when you hire experienced people, they tend to have a lot of skill sets and much more efficiency. And so right now, we're kind of happy with what we're seeing on the planning technician side. And we'll wait it out another year to see if there's a need for that in the future. Under administration, so the requests for a budget analyst, which is still in there, and HR tech, which is not, and a communications tech, which is not. Budget analysts, the rationale for those requests are, we are getting ready to spend a lot of money in the next seven to 10 years on both transportation, but also with parks and fire and facilities. And we need to get a, a really good handle on how much money we're going to be spending and start lining up where the revenue streams are going to come from to support those expenditures. So this is someone to give us some longer range financial planning. It's also a, a way to look at our departments in cases where there's two departments doing similar things, are there more efficient ways to do that? So there's some more operational, everyday approaches to this budget analyst position. As far as what's out on the HR tech and the communications tech, I'd like to see how this governing board admin assistant helps out with the workload that HR is dealing with. And we're also going to try to do something similar to what the towns of Clayton and Garner have done, where they got PEG Media to contribute funds to their staffing for communications assistants. So we're going to have a go at that before we ask you to include that in the FY25 budget. And the governing board, as I mentioned, there's money in there for an admin assistant. I listed this as a, a part-time position. You could start out if you wanted to, just using a temp agency to see if it works. So you don't need to jump into hiring someone as a, a part-time employee, but the funds are there if you did want to hire a part-time employee.
Is this supposed to say FY25?
Sure is.
Okay.
As I go with that position consistent, we have two, currently we have a full-time HR and a assistant HR clerk, correct? For, on page 28.
Yeah.
So what were the administrative assistant, what were they, what they potentially?
So this is, this is something really for you all to discuss. It's just an idea that I had, but the idea being that there's, there's a lot of requests that come into human resources right now, examples for your travel and training, supplies and materials, scheduling meetings, things like that. That is what I envision could be a, a value for you all, so you don't have to go to human resources. But at the end of the day, the value is going to be determined and the purpose is going to be determined by you all.
All right.
That, that's what was in my head when I put it in.
Back to that budget analyst, would that include anything to do, you know, with monitoring grants or, or any grant involvement with that?
Yeah, I think that it could actually. One of the things that, and you'll see this in a couple of slides, is we've got congressional earmark for the fire EMS station, a bountiful seven and a half million dollars. It comes with a lot of reporting. And so this might be a position that could help with that. Long would answer your question, yes, I think, I think it could assist on grants. On the fire side, six firefighters were requested, admin assistant and captain promotions. We've put three firefighters in the FY25 budget. We've kept out three, given that we've entered a partnership with Wake County where they will take on the training and the pay for three firefighters with the understanding that we pick those firefighters up in FY26.
Is that based on our population or is that, how, how did they determine that they would pick up three firefighters as opposed to 12?
So similarly to what you heard with the police department, unfortunately, we don't really match national trends. And what I mean by that is you can look at similar sized municipalities, even within Wake County, and our call volume is extremely higher than what others. So, so to get right at your question, as we analyze regularly, Wake County analyzes our response data, how many firefighters are we able to respond to calls? When they do that, that not only includes our firefighters, but our neighboring departments, Hopkins, Wendell, if you will. Because we're looking, they have very identified, we use some of the similar metrics, but we continually, over and over again, don't meet our goals when it comes to our manpower on fire calls. And that, that's where the number comes from. They've identified that we need about two people per shift to try to meet our response goals. So that's where we're, our aim is the three that we requested and then the three that they additionally supported through the career in a year program. So that's where it comes from.
And so with the career in a year program, is there any wiggle room with what Zebulon can request as far as what Wake County is willing to support?
Yeah, I think if, if we had requested more, that certainly would have been considered. They basically took the request we had, which was the six, and that's where the, the conversation started. Three, more than an immediate fix, because those three would come on very quickly and then the other three would be somewhat delayed. So that's, but I think if we had asked for, you know, nine or, or whatever, they would have certainly considered that.
And they'll be coming on, I think it's a little bit less than a year when they'd be ready to come on, so before the. be ready to come on, so before the end of the fiscal year, we might see those positions hit.
We would, that's right, we would see them in, in middle to late June of '25, because the academy, you're exactly right, is about nine months, but they don't start till the first of October.
Okay.
So that's, but we would actually see them working here, end of June.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
The other positions here that are included in the FY25 budget is the admin assistant, so I'm going to get these proportions not exactly right, but right now, your fire chief spends, I want to say 30, 40% of his time on administrative duties, deputy chief spends probably 60 to 70% of their time doing things like scheduling, training, certifications and payroll. I've got some real concern with this, not only that much of a department director's time doing admin work like that, but particularly with that USDA grant, as well as moving our emergency operations plan into taking, now that we have a plan of getting it implemented and us doing some more training exercises, freeing up time for the chief and the deputy chief to engage in those activities. And with the additional firefighters, right now, we've got a situation where we've got like a first among equals on, on some apparatus, and so this is a way to clarify commanding roles with each apparatus, and so that's why there's captain promotions included. All right, so your next steps, your next work session is May 15th. We'll have some topics to present for you, we'll talk with you in greater detail about community economic development projects and programs, as well as parks. We'll give you some language to consider for revising your strategic plan grants, but first and foremost, it's really an opportunity for you all to have a discussion amongst yourself about whether the budget that's been presented is meeting your goals and targets. Between now and then, my recommendation is, take a look at the budget we handed out, and hopefully, we've thinned it out considerably from years past, so hopefully it's more digestible. But if I were to give you a recommendation, is to focus in the next week on two areas, read the budget message, I think that will give you a good overview of what's included. And then if you would go to page 61, you'll see the start of the capital improvement plan. If you look at all of the projects that have funding under the FY2025 recommended column, that will give you an idea of the capital projects that are being recommended in this budget. Take a look at that, please come back with questions, whether those questions are if you need clarifications or explanations, or if you see something in there that you wanted to see in there, and you, as a group, can discuss on what gets added in and what gets taken out, taken out based upon your priority. That concludes my presentation on the FY25 recommended budget. If you want to know more, and this really goes to the community, we'll have it available on our website, as well as we'll have hard copies available in those areas that are noted. We deliver a couple of copies to civic teachers at both East Wake Academy and East Wake High School as well, but if someone is looking for a hard copy to come in, obviously, there will be one available at the library, Chamber of Commerce, down at the community center, as well as here at Town Hall, if they don't want to look at the electronic version. Again, that completes my presentation of FY25 budget. I'll welcome any final questions or comments before we move on to the next topic.
Mr. Black, sir.
Yeah, I have a question prior to us discussing the CIP budget. And sorry, Chief Perry, but I need you back up here.
That's not a problem, we've got a step program, so this gets my steps up, so I appreciate it.
Yes, I'm here for you, I'm here for you. So when we talk about having to think about in the not-too-distant future, expanding how many fire stations we have, I know that right now, there is a three-to-five-year waiting period in some cases for new trucks. And so, do we have things addressed here as far as ordering a new truck and starting that process, so that when we open up these new fire stations, we don't have to wait for a year or six months or even an hour before we have a truck come in?
Yes, so the CIP you see in front of you does take that into account. We have a truck that is scheduled for replacement in '27, so we're assuming that we can purchase something that we can get in about a two-year timeframe. Our next one is due in somewhere about '28, '29, and that's on our, you recall, we had a mini-retreat a while back, and we talked about shrinking some of those times down because we're putting more miles on our trucks than we ever did. But the short answer is yes, this, the CIP in front of you does take into account those extended delivery times, and we've additionally, we've mapped out future apparatus purchases as needed with future fire station opening. We don't necessarily always need a few, a new fire truck when we open a new station, but we've, because we'll, we'll begin to spread our resources, if that makes sense.
Instead of selling a truck, we would hang on to it and put it at a substation?
Exactly, and we've got, we've got, for example, the apparatus that we could put in a new station, but where we see the need for new, new trucks, along with new stations, we've got that included in the program, Mr. Will.
Okay, all right, awesome, thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Transportation impact fees.
Gets set up in your schedule, which is also, your schedule of fees, which is also in the budgets that's been handed out to you. One of the more impactful fees is our traffic impact fees. These are fees that we charge to your development community to help offset costs for vehicles, traffic that they produce from their site, downstream traffic that they would see collected at intersections. So this is the first time in, I'm going to say probably six years, maybe five years, that your traffic impact fee has seen an update, so this, the impact fee you're going to see tonight is reflected in your schedule, and we just wanted to give you some rationale behind what is the calculation for the fee. So with that, I recognize Michael.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Part of the rationale of why we're doing this is the current fee that we have, while it accommodates certain, certain sectors of the growth that we're experiencing, it's actually causing harm in other sectors. Right now, our transportation impact fee is $1,122 per peak hour trip generated. That sounds like a lot, however, for a residential neighborhood, we bring in approximately $1,200 per home. The flip side is, when we look at commercial entities coming in, some of these costs that are associated with some of these developments become astronomical to the point where it makes the project not feasible to move forward. We've also looked at other ways to look at how we can address this, and as you may recall, when we updated our transportation impact assessment requirements, we changed that from peak hour trips to average daily trips, much in line, when we started looking at consultants, one of the recommendations from the consultant that we did have was to start looking at it, things differently than we did in the past. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Jeremy Potter from Remy Kempin Associates. They are the consulting team that we hired to do an in-depth analysis of the transportation needs, as well as how we can address changing up this transportation impact fee to not be overly cost prohibitive for non-residential uses, while still making sure that we're generating enough revenue from residential uses. I also do want to mention that transportation impact fees in the state of North Carolina are actually something that you have to have specific legislative approval for. Most municipalities do not have that approval, we're one of the municipalities that does. And as such, we have to be very careful, not just for transportation impact fees, but all of them, including Parks and Recreation impact fees, on what we spend that money on and how we calculate what we collect for that. There have been municipalities within Wake County that have not followed the proper procedure and have lost that right. So this is something that we need to be very delicate about, because it is a significant income generator for us to be able to use for transportation improvements, and that's why we hired a third-party outside consultant that is very professional and understands this a lot better than staff does. So with that, I'll turn over to Jeremy.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, thank you very much for having me. We've been excited to partner with the town and working on this traffic impact fee update. Jeremy Potter, I'm the Transportation Division Leader. So with that, I will, we'll hop right into it. So just a quick agenda, high level, the purpose of the traffic impact fee update, we'll run through that for a couple of seconds. Mr. Clark just ran through a lot of it for me, so that won't take too much time. We'll look at some deficiencies that led to kind of looking at the traffic impact fee with the roadway network. We'll run through an example, that's probably the best way to explain the fee and what that would look like kind of going forward for the town, and then we'll open it up for any questions or discussion that you may have. So first, purpose of this update and why I'm here, so what is a traffic impact fee? It's a cost per trip fee collected from developers using vehicle trips generated by those developments. And as Mr. Clark just mentioned earlier, the town currently has a traffic impact fee in place, however, it needs to be updated to reflect no transportation system deficiencies with recent cost estimates for improvements, and also, as he indicated earlier, it was typically, or the existing one's based on peak hour, and this new one is based on AADT, which is your annual average daily traffic on roadways, not peak hour, it's over the entire day. So what we looked at was to look at deficiencies in the roadway network. We looked at the existing year of 2021, when the study started, horizon year of 2050, to be consistent with planning documents. And what we've identified here were seven roadway segments in addition to one intersection that needs improvement at Pierce's and Proctor. One thing we do want to note, because this will come up here in a minute or so, there is a deficient link existing when we ran the analysis, and that is Gannon Avenue from 64 Business to 96. So that one is, is the deficient link in 2021. The deficient links that will be deficient between now, thank you, which is right there, is the 2021 deficient link. The remaining, right there, there are remaining links that are marked in red and identified one through eight are the links, and then, as I mentioned, the large diamond with the eight is the Pierce's-Proctor Road intersection. But as you can see here, it's links along 64, 97, 39, 96, so various roadway links throughout, throughout the town were analyzed, and these are the ones that were identified to be deficient between now and 2050.
Jeremy, so just to help people understand what a deficient link means, my understanding is that it could mean that the road has not, is not wide enough, or it doesn't have turn lanes, or it needs some kind of signalization or a roundabout. Is that correct?
Mostly yes.
Okay.
This is looked at at a very high level of essentially roadway widening of two-lane to four-lane, three-lane to five-lane, but it's based on a volume to capacity ratio, and anything one or above is deficient. But it can, it can warrant, you know, intersection improvements, but we didn't get to the identification of exactly what intersection improvements would be on this high level, it was more so looked at overall roadway segments, but yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And to kind of run through these, just to identify the deficiencies a little more, as I mentioned, West Gannon Avenue, we're looking at that from the Western Study Boundary to MacTod Road to a four-lane or five-lane, and a lot of the four-lane or five-lane, the four-lane would be a median divided, five-lane would be with a two-way left turn lane in the middle. East Gannon Avenue, same, same capacity deficiencies, need to widen to a four-lane or five-lane. Arendale Avenue, NC 96, widen to a four-lane roadway up to the northern study boundary, north side of town. NC 39, widening to a three-lane roadway. Old Bun, Riley Hill Road, SR 20320, widening from Parks Village Road to Shepherd School Road to either four-lane or five-lane. Shepherd School Road, SR 2406, widening from Old Bun Road to East Gannon Avenue to three-lane. MacTod Road, widening from the southern boundary to East Gannon Avenue to either four-lane or five-lane roadway. So majority of these are widening, as we mentioned a second ago, of widening from probably two-lane or three-lane to four-lane or five-lane. And then the one intersection we identified that would be deficient between the current year and 2050 is the Pierce's Road-Proctor Road intersection, that's currently stop-controlled and single-lane approaches, and the recommendations there were signalization, addition of turn lanes, as we referenced earlier. So as we talked earlier, was the traffic impact fee? And what we boiled down here is essentially, it's a cost per trip calculation that we mentioned earlier, and I can walk you through this at a fairly high level and explain why we looked at deficient lengths and that horizon year of 2050. So, and why also the existing deficient link comes into play at this point. So the existing deficient link, now that's right through downtown that we mentioned earlier, since that's identified already, could not be used with a future impact fee, it would need to be used by the current impact fee, would need to be funded that way. So what we took were the construction costs for those seven deficient lengths and eighth intersection, and developed a construction cost based into the future of 2050, and you're looking at roughly $200 million for all those improvements to be taken into account. The one deficient link that we were looking at earlier, roughly construction cost in 20, 2023 cost was about $6 million. So when you take those, those differences there, you know, it leaves you with a little over $190 million in construction costs that needs to be funded by the growth in traffic. To normalize that, you look at the 2050 projected AADT and remove out your 2021 AADT, so what you're looking at is really the construction costs that you're going to need for those deficient links, and that's based on the growth in traffic. So you're directly correlating the eight projects that were identified to the growth in traffic, to kind of get that correlation. Now, there's two kind of, as you could look at, through-trip discount and trip-in discounts, and I could briefly touch on those. The through-trip discount, because this is also based on AADT, this is not based on peak hour, a through-trip is a trip that does not begin or end within the town. This is a trip, a trip that someone is going through town, so that's calculated within your AADT, but it's not originating or ending within the town. So it's someone traveling from west of town through east of town and vice versa. And a trip-in discount, why that's calculated 50%, that's so you're not double-counting a trip that begins or ends at the same place. How you can rationalize that is, if you run to the store, that's one trip, you're making a trip to the store and coming back. You're not wanting to double-count that as, when you leave, that's one trip, and when you come back, that's a second trip. So that's the reason you're, you're not wanting to double-count a trip-in discount. But once again, this is all based on AADT, so that's why you're not trying to look at this at a peak hour trip, you're looking at it overall AADT, so you need to include looking at the through-trips and trip-in discounts. So adding all that into this formula, what you come out with from a cost per trip, and this is a cost per trip that's resulting from a development, is $221.53 per trip. Now, as I mentioned earlier, probably the best way to explain this is to walk through an example, so I'll walk through one fairly quickly here. So here's an approved multi-use development, hypothetical, 500 homes, so looking at the cost per trip, 500 homes is going to create 4,715 trips per day, so the traffic impact fee for that would be roughly $1 million. And as you can see, we've broken that down at impact fee per home as well. I think Mr. Clark alluded to kind of what the impact fee looks like now for cost per home.
That was $1,200, correct, $1,200.
Currently, it's $1,200, that's correct.
Thank you.
So as part of this multi-use, hypothetical multi-use development, we've got a 5,000-square-foot medical office, that would generate 180 trips per day, so calculating that, you're looking at just shy of $40,000 in that impact fee. And then lastly, in this hypothetical scenario, you've got two fast-food drive-through restaurants, roughly 2,500 square feet apiece. Each one of those would generate roughly, just shy of 600 trips per day, so you're looking at about $130,000 each in traffic impact fee, so total of $260,000 roughly. So adding all that up for one development that had 500 homes, medical office, and two fast-food drive-through facilities, you're looking at an impact fee of about $1.35 million. of about $1.35 million. And that's based on a cost-per-trip fee of $221.53 per trip. So that's breaking all this down into, if you had one development that came in with all those, all those pieces, that is roughly the impact fee that the town would be able to collect from the developer. And to kind of go back to what we talked about earlier, the traffic impact fees that are collected, you know, are used to identify transportation deficiencies that the town identifies. So, you know, that's at the town's discretion as well. So if you get 10 years, five years down into the road, down the road into the future, and you realize, hey, the Pierce's Proctor Road intersection needs addressing earlier than others, you can use those impact fees to go ahead and address those intersections, as well as supplement, supplement funds that would be put forth through from NC DOT or other funding sources as well. So these are impact fees the town would have at their discretion to use for transportation improvements when those improvements are needed. But I'll kind of pause there. And Mr. Clark, did I miss anything or need to touch on anything more?
One thing I also note is, quick move this up before Lisa yells at me for not speaking the microphone. One thing I also know is, right now, with our peak trip hour calculation, as an example, a 1,000-square-foot drive-through coffee shop, which is actually the highest peak-hour generation use in the IT manual, the transportation impact fee for that alone would be 3/4 of $1 million. And for a 1,000-square-foot drive-through coffee shop, that is something that's cost-prohibitive in our community right now, given land costs and the anticipated generation. This will bring that cost down for non-residential uses while increasing the cost for the residential uses to create a balance to better address the future transportation needs. This is only one piece of the puzzle, however. When we look at other impacts such as the developer requiring or being required to construct things in the transportation impact or the improvements from the transportation impact assessment, as well as the comprehensive transportation plan, those three things need to work synergistically in order to be able to realize the improvements necessary to prevent substantial congestion problems in the future.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we're going to need $200 million to address the proposed 2050 traffic infrastructure updates, correct?
Correct. Okay, correct. Based on current traffic projections, that would be the roadway network deficiencies that would need to be addressed to bring them up to acceptable standards.
And I do want to, I do want to have some understanding about how those projections were run, like what was the rate, what exactly was looked at for those 2050 numbers. So if we take that $200 million for the transportation needs for 2050, and we take out, or we divide it by the 500 homes, one medical office, and two fast-food restaurants, we're going to have to create 148 and change of this type of development of 500 homes, one medical office, and two fast-food restaurants in order to reach that goal of $200 million by 2050, correct?
If the math, if the math is correct, I'll take your, take your word for the kind of run of those, exactly how many that would take.
Well, I took, I took $200 million and then divided it by the 1.348 million. Yeah? Okay. All right. So we're looking at 148 of this development cluster. Okay. All right.
And to address your earlier question about the rate, so the rates that were used were consistent with the CTP that the town has and adopted. So the volumes that were used were started with 2021 and projected forward with consistent rates with the CTP.
So how did we, how did you figure out the consistent rates? Because the stuff that we've used to project to 2021, clearly, we've had substantial growth in Wake County and an increase in what was expected as far as transportation and other types of like vehicular usage. So please help me understand, like, how that rate translated from the 2021 out if you use that same number instead of, I mean, like, did you use updated Campo numbers?
Yeah, so NC DOT numbers were used, the 2050 CTP numbers were used to look at kind of all those projections, to make sure everything was consistent.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Mayor, let me add on to something that Commissioner Baxter was bringing up. So much like the parks and rec impact fee, the traffic impact fee is not meant to be, nor can it be, the sole revenue source. If we raise parks and rec impact fees, our traffic impact fees to carry the full load, it would shut down development. And so this is, this is just one tool, bond referendums being another tool, as well as your property tax rate. So just, I didn't want the board to think this was like the end-all, be-all solution. It's just a tool.
Any other questions?
Mayor, while we transition, I'll point out that the transportation impact fee that was just discussed, if you go to page 46, which is in your fee schedule, that's where that, you'll find that in the budget that's been handed out to you. So transitioning on to branding, in the current fiscal year, FY '24, you have money for both branding and wayfinding. Right now, that is not included to roll over in your FY '25 budget unless you all make a decision that you are interested in continuing on with branding and wayfinding. To help you make that decision, I wanted to have Caleb spend some time with you to talk about what the branding process looks like, so you can make a decision on whether you want to do branding, continue branding or not, and then that can inform whether that funding stays out of the FY '25 budget or gets pulled back in. So with that, I'll recognize Caleb.
Excuse me.
You have a question?
Yes. Before, before Caleb gets started, are we going to get an update on the last consultants that we used before Caleb could get started, Joe?
Sure. So the, the last presentation that was given to the board was, and I'm going on memory, but it was, it was a mini-retreat in the spring of '23. So that's the last work that was done on this. And we can, we can share, I think it's even on YouTube, but that, that's the last product. There was not, there wasn't interest in the board in moving forward with that or even getting feedback on, on those brands and logos. And so I just held that consultant off, waited till we got a communications director in here. But we can, we can repeat that, but the last information this board received is the last information that consultant produced.
Okay. I guess I'm just, I'm asking because I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't know that there was any kind of clear direction on whether we were moving forward, we were stopping, we weren't going to use them, we were starting from scratch. Like, I, I don't have a lot of clear direction on where we ended with them, other than, you know, the feedback we, that we gave during that meeting, and then that was, was that just it? So are we starting from scratch? Like?
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I just, I'm just trying to make sure that we move forward.
Yeah. So whether you want to retain the current consultant or not, is, is going to be your call. Okay? If you're, if you're satisfied with that product and you want to move forward with that, you have that option. If you want to stay with the consultant and give them an opportunity to modify the product, you can do that. Our goal here is to, whether you like or dislike the consultant's product or even the consultant team, the process they followed is going to be very much like what Caleb is going to share with you. And when you go through a community branding process in general, it's going to evoke a lot of feelings, and it's going to invoke a lot of, evoke a lot of conflict. And so our goal right now is just, are you prepared? Are you interested in going through that cycle? And if you are, then, then we need to budget appropriately for that process. If you want to move forward with what the consultant has already done, then we've got, we've got money budgeted where you can move forward on that. If you want to revise what the consultant has done, we've got money to do that. So we're really at a, we're really at a, at a place to hear from you all on how you want to move forward.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. I'll save the rest of my feedback to, maybe you'll answer some of those, answer some of my questions during your presentation. Thank you, Caleb. Thank you, Joe. Just being that I wasn't a part of that board, can you enlighten me a little bit more about that consultant and what that looked like?
I'll talk about the schedule, and I don't know if that will answer your question. But the consultant was hired, and again, I'm going on memory, it was in the spring of '22, summer of '22, they produced their first draft of a logo. Board did not seem to express interest in moving forward on that. They came back with a different version. Again, I'm going on rough timeframes. Fall of '22, went back to the drawing board again and came back to the board at one of the mini-retreats in the spring. And I'm going to guess it was maybe March or April. As far as the product that they produced, I would have to, I would have to get that to you, but I don't have that right now.
I will say, Commissioner Davis, I very intentionally did not include what they did in this presentation right now, for the intention that I don't want, if you take a look at designs and stuff like that, it is going to influence your current opinion. And I wanted fresh minds on feedback for this. So we can bring that back to a later date, but I really just want y'all's immediate opinion on this to get a, for lack of better words, the most real sense on what we want from the branding conversation.
I think Commissioner Baxter and I were probably the only ones that was involved in it at that time, and Commissioner Clark. But my memory says that we really weren't that satisfied with the...
We were all there. Yeah.
Okay.
The only new one is Commissioner Davis.
Okay.
And I'm happy to share the images and stuff.
Well, I think that that should come from the town. I think that she should get all of that information. Yeah.
I'm happy to share it with y'all individually, too, but we can do a larger presentation, too.
Thank you. As long as you get it.
Turn over the history, Wes.
Good deal, good deal.
And I do think it's good to take a look at what the consultant has done, especially as y'all consider whether you want to keep using this consultant or whether you want to use those designs. But for right now, this is going to be more of a rudimentary overview, going through what a brand is, what the Zebulon brand is, what a rebrand is. And as with every question that I like to do in the work session, I really like this to be first, a basic presentation, and then just a dialogue between y'all, that I am a resource to bounce any questions off, have any other ideas that you might have and see the feasibility. But largely, my goal is to collect feedback from each and every one of you to get a better sense of what we're going to do going forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Caleb.
I am not a big fan of just lecturing to people. So, beginning with the town's Zebulon branding, and Joe, I appreciate the feedback. I'm going to go and, like I said, give a very rudimentary overview. That isn't just because I feel like that's necessary, but that's especially for the people at home. And because, Commissioner Davis, you haven't been here before for the past rebrands, so I want to make sure that I'm not just lobbing a bunch of stuff at a hundred-foot view and leaving it behind and all that stuff, because a rebrand can get incredibly complicated at certain points. And going back to just the very basic question and why we're here is what is a brand? And a brand is the public-facing images for an organization. For a municipality, this can range from a lot of different things, from the town logo to the motto that we use, right down to the town name, or something as complex as what history and what language we want to project, very public-facing, that we want to incorporate in everything we do. A rebrand is functionally a top-to-bottom evaluation of who we are and what identity that we want to project publicly. Our brand is going to be how we're perceived to the world, both internally within our town and our constituents, and externally to the county at large or stakeholders who are looking to Zebulon to potentially move in and call this place our home. When we take a look at the individual elements of a brand, there are nine that I really want to highlight with this. The brand name, which is the name of the organization. A logo, the most important public-facing image that everybody sees and immediately recalls who you are. A color scheme, so just branded colors that gives you a better sense of, you know, gives you a better sense of things. When you take a look at like Coca-Cola, there are very clearly red and black that is immediately identifiable, and there's a reason they do that. Similarly, typography, you want specific text that people recognize immediately. And sometimes with a rebrand, designers will even create a unique text and a unique script specifically for your organization, which really sets you apart and gives you a great sense of your unique identity. A motto or slogan, so just a tagline that you can refer back to all the time. A language, tone and voice, which gets a little bit different, a little more abstract, but that is, a lot of the times, you will see a couple pages typed up during a rebrand, and it is filled with language that tells your story, tells who you are, tells what you stand for, and tells where you're going. And this is almost a master document that you then pull information from on all messaging going forward. Purpose, mission and values, which is a lot more straightforward. It's who you are and what you stand for. Imagery and style, so a lot more abstractly, what you want your rebrand or your brand to invoke. When you take a look at things, think of like trends and fads almost. You have some companies that really lean into the 1980s retro feel. You have some organizations that have this very like clean and crisp outline, and that gives a good sense, very abstractly, of who you are and what you want to represent. And one thing that I think is overlooked, but very important, is positioning. When it comes to an organization, especially a municipality, we operate in a very, a very well-established ecosystem, one where everybody plays their own role and stands out for different reasons. And a unique brand can help us define what position we want, both in the state of North Carolina, within Wake County, and especially the eastern Wake County region, as we grow as quickly as we can. If anyone wants to stop me, if y'all have any questions. Now, a strong brand can be incredibly impactful. A strong brand gives you a better sense of recognition and awareness. So somebody sees your brand, sees your colors, and tells exactly who you are immediately. You have a better sense of community. A lot like athletic teams, you have a lot of pride in who you are behind that brand. I am a major LSU Tigers fan, a major Carolina Panthers fan, and I'm very proud of that. And that largely comes because of the brand that those organizations carry. A strong brand tells the story that you want, not just who you are, but also where you're going. And it's one of those things that appearance can really mimic reality in that sense, too. You know, if you project a very strong image, that is naturally what you are going to come into. It resonates well with stakeholders, both inside the community and outside. Folks are moving to Zebulon every day. Businesses are looking here. Developers are looking here. People want to come to Zebulon. And how your brand portrays lets you publicly announce what kind of groups that you want to come into town. And it makes a very strong first impression. People can tell when a brand isn't cohesive, it's not all together, it lacks a level of professionalism versus one that is very right there, that's very put together, that's very sharp, that's very clean, and knows what it is. And as we all know, first impression is a lasting one that's hard to overcome. So a strong brand with a strong identity can go a long way. So that's what a brand is. A rebrand is functionally taking that brand and updating it for the modern times. You want a rebrand update and have the elements better fit who you are now. You'll normally see rebrands come from a desire to publicly reflect a new emerging identity. So when you take a look at some of our neighbors around here, such as Wendell and Knightdale, they both recently went through rebrands, and they both did that because of a lot of the growth they're experiencing, and update their brands to take a look at what they want their community identity to be and who they want to attract going forward. So population is a really great milestone for a rebrand. So is to take a look at what kind of developers you want to attract. So is taking a look at different types of businesses and taking a look at how you want to blend both where you are and where you're going.
So...
Yes, ma'am?
Let's just, let's just unpack that a little bit.
Sure.
What kind of development has gone into Wendell that hasn't gone into Knightdale because of their brand?
I think you take a look at Wendell Falls and the way that's been perceived, has been a very unique process, and a lot of that came along with the brand. Wendell Falls, the name itself, kind of coincided with the brand that Wendell developed, and a lot of the imagery really developed from that as well.
Thank you.
When you take a look at a rebrand, you're probably asking why you want to go through, which is the reason we're asking these questions. Old brands, rebrands for municipalities, oftentimes, the old brand no longer represents the town, and has a very broad... the town, and as a very broad term, that can mean a lot of different things. Specifically, we're not saying that the entire brand is no longer relevant to anything in the town, but it does mean that you're in a different point in your town's life, and you're at a different point in your life cycle, and you might want to update certain elements or all the elements to really reflect that. You wish to resonate better with new stakeholders, again, a public-facing brand will very clearly announce to different stakeholders who you are and who you want into the place. Your brand is sometimes, for lack of a better word, out of fashion. Every couple of years, really every decade or so, we go through some design preference changes, and we go through changing societal norms. And actually, one bigger thing that I realized that I left out is, we learn more about ADA accessibility, accessibility to disability communities, basically every single year. And you'll see very commonly, especially with text and color, that becomes a lot more updated to make it more accessible to a broader coalition. And finally, you could be planning for the future. The rebrand might not represent necessarily who you are right now, but it might represent who you want to be. A rebrand is very clear in identifying who that is. When we're talking about developing a brand, a successful rebrand requires input and insight from the community, and that requires a couple key people. First is, the residents are constituents, they need to be involved in every single step of this process. They need to have input straight from the start that we use to craft this going forward, because what is a town if not the people that make it up? Business owners, the people that want to attract people outside into the community, need to be, play a role in this as well, especially because a lot of them will end up updating their logos and their brand based on the brand of where they're at. Community leaders, especially because they have a sense of different communities that government and municipalities traditionally don't reach. This is especially true for younger audiences, especially true for women, especially true for communities of color, and especially true for second-language communities, like communities that predominantly speak Spanish, or disability communities who might have accessibility concerns coming into a municipality, which unfortunately has historically been a barrier that they faced. Town staff, and very specifically frontline staff especially. I'm talking about police officers, firefighters, public works guys that are out in the street, Parks and Recreation employees who are interacting with the community. These are people who get so much feedback from members of the community, and really get a better sense of what's going on, but oftentimes, in rebrand, they're really the people that are left off the table. We need to make sure that we're not doing that for our front-facing staff, because they have a great sense of where the community is at. And, of course, elected officials. Y'all were elected because the community trusts y'all, and your opinions, and your advice. They trust that you understand where the town was, where we are, and where we're going, and so your feedback is going to be invaluable as we develop a brand. And of course, this includes many different ways that we need to reach folks. Things like surveys, focus groups, town halls, are all incredibly important, and as we get a better sense of what we want, and which company we would go with if we did a rebrand, we can get a better sense of all those different things. But in communications, we have what's called the Rule of Seven, saying that you need to reach people seven different times in order to get them to activate. And so, this means that we're going to need to be as creative and activate as many different times to hear from as much of the population as possible. So, these are just some of the ways, but make no mistake, you're going to hear so many more. One case study I want to bring up is the McDonald's rebrand, and I want to ask y'all for a second, which one of these two do you actually like more? The one on the light, the left, or the one on the right?
The one on the left is so nostalgic.
If you are 100% correct, most of the population would agree with you. Polling shows that most people prefer the one on the left, up until they have to spend their dollars. Yeah. The nostalgia really evokes a lot of things, but when it comes to practicality, people really prefer the one on the right. McDonald's was trying to figure out how they could capture more of the market, and they decided, while the left is more nostalgic and is an iconic brand for them, the right one was what was going to resonate with more people, especially when you take a look at people that just want to grab a cup of coffee, people wanting to take their friends to lunch, people without kids. And the polling initially said that the one on the left was right. Following their rebrand, McDonald's saw a 5.5% year-on-year sales increase, and their best-ever full-year sales performance. But what you will notice is that McDonald's did not just ditch their brand immediately. You can see a lot of, while the building itself might be different, all their mascots are pretty much the same, some of them went through some slight redesigns, but they have the same name, the same theme. They still use that iconic M, which is their logo, and they still use the same typeface that you see up there. So, that is a prime example of repurposing the old, or keeping a lot of the old while repurposing it to fit what we need today. And in my career, I never thought I'd be talking about McDonald's at a town hall, but here we are now. When we get to the town of Zebulon itself, and through what each of these are, we have a couple of different things that represent our brand. The very first is the brand name, which is the town of Zebulon, and what's interesting is that is actually two different parts. You have Zebulon, the town's name itself, and then Town of. And from what I understand, a common story around here is that almost all the municipalities in Wake County are called the Town of something. Town of Wendell, Town of Apex, Town of Holly Springs, because Raleigh was just referred to as the city. And if you were saying you were going to the city, you knew that you were going to Raleigh, you didn't need any additional words, so all the outlying towns decide to establish Town of for that. And it's why you see towns like Zebulon, with 11,000 people and some change right now, being called Town of, and it's why you see a town of Cary with 100,000 people also being called Town of. The reason that's important is because it shows there is some cultural and regional identity and attachment to the Town of part of that, and even just a name in those two words still tells a full story of where we are. The others, I have individual slides for, but you see the logo, which we have, the Zebulon, North Carolina, and the seal. You have the slogan, the Town of Friendly People. You have a color scheme, which we actually don't officially have one, and for typography, we don't officially have any either. Talking about the logo, we have two strangely enough, and the one that you see most common is an unofficial logo. It is one that we used and adopted as a placeholder, because we needed one, but it was never actually, you know, voted in at the end of the day. It's probably the most recognizable one now, though, for the town, but even as a placeholder, it still doesn't follow modern logo design standards that have been adopted only within the last couple of years, which is why, one of the reasons why a rebrand can be incredibly important, taking a look at what we just have now. The other is the town seal, and I want to ask y'all, what do you notice when you see the town seal? What does it kind of evoke? What's the first thing that draws your attention? Load a question, I know.
Farm.
I think we need to update.
I wouldn't, I would say that, that the town seal definitely, definitely represents the past. I would say that.
I, I think I would agree with you on that as well.
Yeah.
Mayor, you said farm?
Yes. But then I'm biased, because I see farming everywhere. Where it doesn't even exist anymore, I still see farm.
But I do think that's a prime example of the logo representing a lot more of the past than where we're currently at, and part of that's the age of the logo, too. It hasn't been updated for a while.
A long while.
Commissioner Clark, from what I understand, you actually know the person that designed the original logo, right?
I do.
Or the seal. So, I just want y'all to kind of consider what you think of, and what emotions that the seal evokes, because a rebrand would take a look at the seal, and figure out what parts we want to keep, what parts we want to establish moving forward, and how we can blend the past with the future. And this is going to be a prime example of something that would be tackled in a rebrand. The town slogan is the Town of Friendly People, and the slogan was originally adopted officially in 1953. However, it was unofficially used for years beforehand as well. All throughout the 40s, you saw the Chamber of Commerce use it, you saw businesses use it, you saw it on different advertising materials and promotions. I will say that the slogan is a very common town slogan, and it was even used in Mayberry and the Andy Griffith Show. That being said, I'm sure y'all, like me, have heard a lot of different folks around town talk about how they like the slogan, and how, what it actually means to them. But a slogan is going to be another thing that is going to be addressed, and I can guarantee you that anybody coming through here is going to address that the Town of Friendly People is an incredibly common slogan used all over the country, and I have no doubt that that would be something that they would want to look into. The town color scheme. Much like how we don't have an official logo, we actually don't have official color schemes. The colors that you see at the bottom, that blue and that red, were borrowed directly from the town logo itself, and I have added a couple that are complementary colors that meet WCAG, so, design and visibility standards in order to complement it, but officially, we don't have a color scheme or color standards adopted. So going through a rebrand, that'd be something brand-new that we can bring to the table, that we can use to identify however we want to, and there's actually a complex science behind colors, and what they evoke, and what they mean, that we can really lean into when we're going through a rebrand. In a similar vein, we don't have town typography. We have unofficial ones that we use. Currently, we use what's called a sans serif font, which is what you see up there, which is different than like Times New Roman. The reason we use that is because it is the most accessible for folks with dyslexia and other disabilities, makes it easier to read, but we have three that we use, which is a bold sans serif, a body sans serif, and then an accent font, and you'll see that long graphics. Which brings me to, those are the parts of a rebrand, but what I want to talk about next is engage in discussion with y'all to get a better sense of what we do and don't like about the rebrand, if there's even an interest in a rebrand, and if so, what do we want to explore? What are we looking for, and what story do we want to tell? And I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have with those three questions, but what I would personally benefit from is hearing y'all discuss among yourselves, and kind of get a better sense of that, so I can get a recommendation going forward for what y'all want to see from it.
Any comments? Questions?
Um, may I?
Commissioner Hirsch?
Okay. I think for me, when I'm looking, when I look at branding and thinking about Town of the Friendly People, thinking about Zebulon, and being a native of Zebulon, I think that it is important that we, because we are so diverse, you know, we have different demographics of people, we have different cultures, we have just a lot of different generational, that, across spans of generations here, people moving, people staying, and I think that it's important that when we look at the brand of our town to not, you know, I know that we want to be fresh, I know we want to rebrand, but I think it's important not to let, to completely let go of our past and our history, because we're Zebulon, and we were founded in, on what we were founded on, and I think that if we are going to include, if we want to make sure that we are including our citizens, the people who've been here, as well as the people who are currently here, and thinking about our future, that it's important to not forget our past. And I'm not saying, you know, that Town of the Friendly People, or that the current seal that we have is right, or that we need to keep everything about it, but I think as we move forward and looking at how to rebrand, that we don't lose the identity of who we are and who we have been for all of these years. I don't know what that looks like, and I don't have the answer, but I just want to ensure that we don't lose Zebulon in order to get a fresh face.
I like to clear my inbox out at the end of the week, so I'm not proposing that we start from scratch, because otherwise, I'd never be able to do that.
Okay, all right. That's the feedback I have right now. I might have more.
Commissioner Baxter?
Certainly, I feel like we can address the town seal. I mean, it's rather generic. It, if you look at that, I'm assuming it's a building, part of me thinks it's a Nintendo controller from the 80s. We're not real sure what type of building that is, and I would argue that that, that building never existed in Zebulon, not one that looked like that. And so, I think that absolutely, we could probably take the mark of Zorro off of the middle, and come up with something that is a little bit more, I think, reflective of the times that we're in. I don't think that abandoning everything about how we identify as a town would be prudent. I think that, that we have a lot of people who are very passionate about the fact that we are the Town of Friendly People. And when we went through the branding process before, what they came back with was something so, what I felt to be completely wackadoodle and nonsensical, that like, I just couldn't balance the two and come to any kind of middle ground, because it was so far out and left Would I like to see the seal updated? Yes, I thought that we started to work on that with the design team that was doing the branding, and then just everything kind of fell off a cliff and we never heard about it again. So, because I know that we spent some time talking about the cupola, or whatever this is, and what that might look like, and what colors we might use, and does the sun shine this way? Do we have the, do we have the shadows going in this direction? So, we were spending some time talking about that, and I do think that we have a lot of folks, whether they are new to the area, or whether they have been here their whole life, that identify with the municipal center as kind of, like, how they think about Zebulon. It really, it's a beautiful building, and we do have functions here, it is a gathering place, so I don't think that using the cupola is a, is a bad idea. I think that we were moving in the right direction with that before just everything But, we had discussions about colors, we didn't like the colors. I do believe that kind of, whenever I've talked to folks out and about, they like the blue and the red, and I know for me, I identify with that typeface, I've seen it for a long time, I rather like it, I like it better than that swirly logo from before, that I will not describe what it looks like, but please, go ahead, everyone, take a look at that, and let me know what you think it looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, I think that we don't necessarily have to figure out a new story to tell about Zebulon, but we need to decide what it is we want to tell and how we want to move forward. We do need to think about colors. In the past four years, I have seen wildly different typefaces, I've seen, I've seen logos used that, I don't, like, I think that somebody just like pulled something off a Photoshop, or, or clip art or something, and if nothing else, we need to solidify what our typeface is going to be, how we're going to use that, what colors we're going to use, and, and then address maybe the town seal, and down the road.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like more of a refresh, maybe.
I don't disagree with that. I think that this could either be reworked entirely or refreshed, but an entirely new rebranding, I think that we tried that, what they came back with, just felt so incongruous with who we are as a town.
I agree, I agree.
But part of it, they were trying to emulate what they had already did in other municipalities close by. You had the same person doing the same thing, so that was part of the process.
I know, he was using the same color scheme that he had used, like, in so many different municipalities, it was like, everybody's using green now, so we should use green.
You should, too.
Green and blue. I think if you were to bring in somebody different and give us a different perspective, they might bring something different to the table. We just kind of went with where the other municipalities in the local area had kind of like utilized.
Sorry, I feel very strongly about this, because I think that we have a strong identity. We're growing, people want to be here, people know Zebulon. We are strong in who we are, we have a strong presence and a strong identity. So, for us to do a complete overhaul or rebrand of who we are, I don't think is necessarily appropriate or necessary, but I think to make a stronger impression of who we are right now, and who people know we are, because they know Zebulon, because they're, we're the second fastest growing municipality in North Carolina. So, it's not that people don't know Zebulon, or that we don't have a strong sense of who we are across municipalities across North Carolina. I think we just need a stronger identity, and a more, an identity that speaks to then, now, and, and later. And I don't...
One thing I do want to say is that, in no world am I, or what I want to develop or just say... or just say, alright, let's completely throw everything out and get rid of everything that's been in the past and everything. In my experience, successful rebrands draw from previous developments and previous updates, and makes them better, while occasionally adding some new things in there that kind of gives a direction of where you're going.
Sure.
So, I do think that when you're calling for a refresh, a rebrand, to me, that is a rebrand done right, is updating what you have and including that in the identity while providing new things that define where you're going.
So, basically addressing the past, present, and the future.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Looking at where you've been, where we are.
And where we're going. There we go.
And one thing I think is very important. And one thing I think is very important is what type of history that we want to tell too, because there is a rich history here in Zebulon, especially for communities that have traditionally and historically been underlooked, underrepresented, and making sure that that is also brought to light while you talk about what's in the history is going to be essential, especially with the way demographics are changing in this town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I think about what, I don't know if y'all can hear me. Is that better? Sorry. Closer, closer.
Can you hear me now?
Got you, yeah, got you, got you.
Back of the room, can you hear me? With Commissioner Harrison and what she's saying, when I, and I just said, when you talk about the past, you know, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going, but you were stating in regards to people knowing what, our town is established, people know who Zebulon is. When I think of a seal, I want to look at something that I am proud of, that represents me, so when I'm wearing it, or when I'm representing it, I have a sense of pride of the town. So, it's sometimes it's not even just about what other people see, but what we see and what we feel when we look at it. So, I think as long as we incorporate that, then we're good and continuing on, like I said, with the past, present, and the future.
So, centering on the seal, what do y'all like about this seal currently specifically? If we're thinking about jumping off points very specifically for this?
I'll tell you what I like about it.
Please do.
The outside rim. I do not like anything in this. I just, I mean, it's just, it was done by a student, she was young, I just, you know, you may want to redo everything if that's the way you like it, but I do away with all that and get, um, I don't mind the outside, that's.
Looks like a seal.
I mean, we just need to come up with something new in the middle.
Tell us how you really feel, Commissioner Clark.
Right, right.
I agree, I have to say, I like the fact that it's a circle, and it says the town is Zebulon.
I like the fact that it captures the, the date.
Yeah. Yeah. Date.
There you go.
Of our incorporation. I think that, that's nice. I mean, because some towns don't have that, but I kind of like that we do have that.
And that could mean, that's the only thing.
But, but the rest of it, this doesn't, this is so very generic, the only thing that I could say about the seal is the bottom left, we might kind of be able to squint our eyes and look at Town Hall and see that picture. I agree.
Oh, okay, alright.
I'm not talking about our Nintendo box up top, I'm talking about the one right below it.
That is the Town Hall.
That is the Town Hall, yes.
I will say, for the current seal, I can appreciate the fact that it attempts to tell the story of Zebulon. That is what, that is what, when I look at it, I can't, okay, I'm getting a little side eye, but.
In, in all fairness, though, when, when that was put in, that was not put in for Town Hall, because that was not the Town Hall at the time, it was a school.
Right.
So. Represented one group of, represented one group of people.
One school.
Yeah, one school. So, it didn't represent it as a total, the town as a total.
I said that it attempted to tell.
When you put it like that.
I mean, that's what it did.
I would be very interested to.
I mean, I know it needs to change, because being a native, as Commissioner Harrison said, from here, I could, each, I had him in that thing, I can tell what it was about religion, we had a church on every corner, that's for sure, farming, definitely that was what every one of us did. And then, I'm saying, the schooling, like, that represented one group of people, which left everybody else out, but then, and I guess that is supposed to be industrial.
Like a piano, I'm not really sure.
That is probably supposed to be Naomi knitting.
Naomi knitting. I agree with that. I agree with that.
What is the?
Naomi knitting.
Stuff next to Devil Dog.
Everybody worked there.
The industrial stuff.
Yeah, industrial.
It was one of our first.
I agree with that.
So, yeah, so like, I can appreciate that it, it, it gives a very vague history, or kind of, you know, but that is what I can appreciate about the seal, is that it does attempt to tell about Zebulon.
Let's have a new graphic designer.
We didn't have Canva back then. So, I'm going to go back to the discussion, which I think I have a decent sense of what y'all do and don't like as far as this is concerned. Let's go to the second question, though. Is there an interest in a rebrand, which I think I know the answer, but I don't want to put words in any of your mouth.
Yes.
I think it's consensus, yes.
Just wanted to make sure. And I think I do have a good sense, at least starting, what we're looking to explore for a rebrand, which is, again, telling the story from past, present, and future, and that's enough for me to get started, as well as the feedback that y'all have given on some of the other pieces that may include in here. Making sure that we are unique and stand out, and don't just do what every other municipality does, make sure that we reflect the unique and strong identity that Zebulon has, while also making sure it's accessible for a larger audience.
And I would say, is, the question says, what new story do we want to tell? I wouldn't say new story, I would say whole story.
That's fair. Probably a better way to phrase that would have been, what do we want to tell about where we're going? But that can be a larger conversation after we decide what the next steps is.
And evolving story.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Can I say, I just actually received a text message from a person who is not a citizen, and this is just interesting, I'm surprised, but what they are saying is that whatever we do in that seal, we want to make sure that it represents the diversity, and diversity is welcome.
Of course, that's, that's a given, with the demographics changes, that's a given.
And we go back to the town seal in the most, not to draw attention to the elephant in the room, but the most blatant thing to me is the two white hands shaking hands.
Correct.
It's, we are a majority people colored town now, with quickly grown Black and Hispanic populations, and that definitely needs to play a part in telling the story about who we are going to be. Okay, with that in mind, these are some of the potential next steps. We will probably, we're going to analyze the feedback that was given today and start to discuss. We're going to start taking a look at organizations to lead the rebrand, and we can talk more about whether we want to stay with the current company, or if we want to look at new ones. And then I can start developing a roadmap for what the rebrand looks like.
Caleb?
Yes, ma'am?
I would like us to see a shortlist of different branding agencies, instead of just being given one that necessarily doesn't create content that we're interested in, because I think that's kind of what happened the last time around. And so, if there are, if there are three to five different companies that we could take a look at what the examples of their, their branding looks like, that would be very helpful to us, so that we're not spinning our wheels hiring an agency just to have them spin back stuff to us that really doesn't fit us in any way.
I'm going to let Joe double check, just to make sure that that is the way that we can approach that, but I don't have any issues with that.
We'll figure out a way to keep you all engaged. The big, the big thing right now is we wanted to get an idea, and I think we got it, which is to keep funds in here to move forward. How we move forward will keep you all engaged and involved in that process.
What I just don't want for us is for you to bring before us a company, and it's like, you can either hire them, or we're not doing the rebrand at this time. Like, we've decided that we want to move forward with some kind of rebrand, and so we might need, we might need some options.
Yeah, I think it's a consensus that we would like to look at a different agency. I think there's a, a majority consensus. If, if, I don't want to put words in everyone's mouth, but I think that.
You're correct.
Could see some of what they've done and compare it, see if it'll be what we would like.
Some gentleman that presented to some of us, I think, a few of us too as well, so you might, just giving them off into as well.
One thing I will say is, this will now be my third rebrand going through with different organizations, so this is not my first rodeo. I have a pretty good sense of how we can elevate this process from the times we've done in the past, so we should be on a pretty good foot, starting with this conversation today and then going forward.
And we look forward to it, Caleb.
Of course.
Any more questions, comments?
I just look forward to working, like Commissioner Harrison said, working together, create something that the community will be proud of.
Thank you.
May we take a short break?
And before we move on, we will take a 10-minute recess.
Reconvene. Town Hall space study.
Was pointed out in the previous topic, this building, while it functions as the town hall, and while the building next door functions as a police station, is were not their original intent or their uses. And so we're experiencing some pain with how the facility is laid out, with not only the office spaces that we have, but just the ability for a citizen to intuitively and freely navigate the space. So we're going to present some options for the board to consider on how to revise the existing space and give some foreshadowing of space needs as we continue to grow as an organization. With that, I'll recognize Michael Clark.
Once again, good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Joe provided a bit of an overview. This building originally was constructed as a school, and we've done the best we can to really retrofit it to meet these needs and operations for a town hall. But as we do continue to grow with staff in relation to population, we're starting to push up against the limitations of this building. We do have one remaining quadrant that we're currently using as storage, that we will likely end up having to turn into offices very, very soon, just to accommodate the staff that has yet to come onboard that was approved under previous budgets. But we're also looking at how staff uses the space differently now. At one point, simple cubicles were satisfactory, and especially in changing markets and conditions, we're really starting to think, you know, outside the box. Part of it also takes into consideration, we are a governmental entity, we need to be able to maintain operations, whether it's planning, or administration, or finance, and especially the police department, we can't just shut down operations, kind of like the Bojangles in Knightdale, where they're just not operating. We don't have that luxury, so we need to be very strategic. Specifically, this looked at this building, as well as the police station. But we're also thinking about, okay, are some of the uses in this building, the best served in this building, as an example? Would parks be better served in a dedicated new community center someplace in town? Same thing with economic development. Is this the best location for the economic development department, or would it be better served in closer proximity to downtown to work more collaboratively with the businesses? So with that, we ended up doing requests for qualifications, and interviewed several firms, and there was a partnership of CPL and KCI, that's an alphabet soup, that really rose to the top in terms of being able to look at it with a fresh set of eyes, have an understanding of municipal needs, have an understanding of historic structures, and being able to best understand the needs of where we are at now, as well as where we're in the future. The team specifically was Josh Wheeler, Chelsea Hansen, and Chad Siri. Chad was here for a little while, but he had to step out, and I believe many of you have met Chad previously. He previously served on the Wake Forest Board of Commissioners, and actually worked as a planner at one point, for the time of many decades ago. But with that, I'll turn it over to Josh for an in-depth analysis of what they did to figure out how we can better use the space.
Good evening. Thank you all. It's a pleasure to be here. Nice to see you all. As Michael said, I'm Josh Wheeler with CPL. I'm an architect and project manager for this project. I think the first step started back in January of this year, and you can see from the couple of graphs on the screen, your town is growing, and quite exponentially, as you can see from those numbers. Starting from 2023 to 2040, we see your staff doubling in town hall itself. Is down, is it right?
Right.
Similarly, this graph here, I provided, looks at that, those numbers historically from 1970 up to 2040. And so as we progress through the presentation, you'll see a few different images of both the town hall and the police department. And this first image here attempts to put a schedule to that work. And so if all work proceeded immediately, starting in 2024, we see that the first phases, the minor phases, which would be minor demo, minor construction in both the town hall and the police department, could start and finish in 2025, with the next phase of that work starting in 2027, and completing by 2029. This next image here is a plan view of town hall. So this is the Phase One, the minor approach. So with this work, we're doing minor demolition and minor construction. So you'll see that many of these spaces look similar, with the noted addition being the new entry, central lobby, in the top center of the plan. And then some reconfiguration space in the lower left, and at the existing lobby that you have today. So the central lobby there, been addition. We would have some infield in your existing lobby now, maybe conference rooms. And then we're proposing an added office in the lower left. These are just bubbles on the screen right now.
So this is the downstairs?
That's correct.
And so we'd be building something off of the existing building?
Potentially. This is, this plan would be a two- to three-year plan, so it would try to fit as many additional folks as possible in your existing footprint.
I don't love, I don't love doing stuff that's going to alter the building in that, in that way, building off the side of the building like that.
I'll jump in to explain. Part of what we've discovered, especially in context during COVID, when we had limited access into the building, is the side of the building doesn't really represent what's recognized as the primary customer entrance, where the, where the parking lot is, to the point where we had folks knocking on windows in both finance and planning in order to get into the building. We've since unlocked those front doors, but we also need to make sure we have maintained ADA access. There are a lot of examples throughout the country of landmark buildings, both in local, as well as federal landmark buildings, where they're able to construct on some sort of additional feature. Secretary, Secretary Interior Standards for Historic Preservation notes that there are certain improvements that can be done. This type of modification would not be able to be done on the front of the structure, but it would be on the side in such capacity that does not obstruct or block any character-defining features of the building. So it'd be a very delicate architectural modification.
Doesn't seem delicate. It seems rather large, but thank you. Please continue.
So moving up to the second floor, again, with this minor renovation, most of the spaces would remain the same, with the addition of the planning suite on the lower left. And so as we move into the Phase Two work, we prepared this site plan here that shows some of your future work, being the fire station to the left, as well as some of the proposed changes that we are proposing. So sort of center of the screen here in the blue is the existing town hall. If indeed the projections that we found are true, in the next five years, you would need an additional building roughly the same size as the existing town hall. For the police station on the lower right, we are proposing a Phase Two work in addition on the lower right, as well as expanding the secured parking toward the left. This next image is a view of the first floor of town hall for the Phase Two work. This work keeps the existing footprint, but gives us more flexibility internally to demolish walls and rearrange spaces. We'll see that many of the common elements, such as the stairs, the restrooms, elevator, would have to remain. Most notably, you'll see the central lobby at the top center as an addition, potential addition. And we are proposing that the council chambers could move to the lower level. If we move up to Level Two, you'll see many of the common spaces in the light blue. Those would be the stairs, the restrooms, also medium and large-sized conference rooms, as well as the break room. So the space we're currently in today could become two to three smaller conference rooms.
How does the filming studio fit in?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, the filming studio? How does that fit in?
As part of our work, we conducted surveys with the town staff. The filming studio is one request for the Communications Department. So this is Part B of the Phase Two work that we looked at on the site plan. So that's renovating inside of the town hall. Part A of that would be the new building, potentially located just across from the entry. If we move on to the Police Department, just to orient everyone, the front door, the front entry is here, in the center of the plan. Similar to the town hall for this Phase One work, it would be the essential needs as quickly as possible. So we are renovating the entry lobby, as you see, by adding an additional reception area within the lobby. We are also proposing that we reconfigure the corridor access at the training and community space, and add a single restroom for that use. Many of the other areas remain the same in the Phase One work. The only exception is the existing open patrol area becomes office area.
Are you using different designations between the, the police department and town hall? Or is, or do you just not have restrooms in town hall anymore?
We did have restrooms. They were noted in blue in town hall. So the colors are not corresponding.
Neither, neither is the verbiage. You have what, TLT? Is that supposed to be toilet?
Yes, that's correct.
Ah, okay. All right. Thank you.
So similar to town hall, the Phase One work would be the immediate need up to two to three years in the future. If we move beyond that to the Phase Two work, you'll see that there is more construction. We, we still incorporate the reception into the lobby area. We look at moving the training and community space to the center of the plan, and configure new doors, secured access, to connect the public to the lobby and the training. Throughout the plan, we see potential to increase the women's restroom and locker areas, as well as the secured storage. And if we move to the right on the office wing, there are options to increase the office sizes for the command suite, converting some space to needed conference spaces, conference rooms, enlarging the break room with the increase of staff, as well as increasing the record storage and evidence storage. The final piece of that would be in addition with new offices on the lower right here. And this plan would satisfy the, really the three-to-five-year, maybe six-year need as projected.
So in this one, you're adding the spaces here down the bottom?
On the lower right, that is an addition, a proposed addition.
In what was the playground?
I feel like there's an awful lot of shuffling going around here, and instead of just doing it right the first time, you're asking us to spend a heck of a lot of money twice. In addition, we've already, as, let's look at the police department, we just put a whole bunch of money into a kitchen and, and break area that would then be turned into record storage and secure evidence. I'm not sure that I'm digging this plan. I'd like to understand your methodology and your reasoning behind all of this shuffling and multiple construction iterations here.
Sure. And I can, I can reiterate that Phase One and Phase Two are not necessarily concurrent, depending on the, the financing in place and the projected needs. You could move directly to Phase Two and not go through with Phase One. As far as the, the break room location, we were trying to make smart moves that remain within that footprint as much as possible, knowing that once you extend past that, the cost of construction would be increased. We're trying to keep the break room close to where it's at currently, and that would allow us to tap into utilities like water and sewer, et cetera.
So projection of how long to do this, starting, I mean, how?
For the, for the Phase Two work, it would be three years and up, potentially up to six years.
Okay. Thank you.
As the population grows, more staff will come on, and you have to readjust after.
Thank you.
I've got several thoughts. You have the economic developer, Development Department moving off-site into downtown, but I think that really that doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense for me, just because our economic developer and our economic development team, as it will grow to be, is going to be focused on more than just the downtown area. And so I think that saying that we're going to move that one department off-site, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Certainly, we have our downtown Main Street program, which should not be located within this facility. That should be located downtown. In addition, we, once we build out the firehouse, we are going to have that building that can be retrofit. We also have the former EMS building that can be utilized, and I'm not sure that, that those buildings have been captured in what is being planned, just a whole lot of, a whole lot of shuffling.
Think about the money we're spending on already. Within the last year, we spent over $2 million. If you look at the $400,000 for the AC unit for, for the police we just put in there, then the $386,000 we approved for the fire department, that was on top of what was already there. So we spent almost.
For the, for the retrofit.
Correct, for the retrofit, correct.
So I mean, like, we've got newer, newer facilities at the fire department, not saying that it's perfect fit, but it hasn't even been addressed here. And we've, so we've got buildings that we can utilize. And, well, instead of having to shuffle stuff around two times for each of these buildings.
I, I, I agree. I don't know that we're, we're here, we're ready with all the things that we have up in the air. Like, this is, it's, it looks to allow us to spread out and to be more comfortable, I guess, kinda. But with all of the, the buildings, the fire station, the things that may not be occupied in a year or two, I think that this may be like jumping the gun, considering the amount of money we have already invested over the last few years. It does seem like we're doing double, double the work, double the effort, and triple the cost. So I'm afraid to put that much more money. I'm definitely, and I'm, I'm not sure if you're finished, so I'm just giving feedback.
I think there's one more slide.
Okay. I'll say the last part. I definitely am not in favor of, of changing the outside of the building and building on. I think that would take away from the integrity and the his, history of our building. So, but continue. Thank you.
I'll actually jump in to, to explain the rationale. Part of Part of this process, as was mentioned earlier, was the consultants met with each of the departments, and in addition to the regular planning department, they met with the economic development division separately. And that was actually something that they brought up, was about the possibility of relocating, preferably in close proximity to downtown. Specifically, possibly moving into the existing EMS, or the former EMS building, being that that's already a town-owned facility. That was something that they were thinking could be a possibility. Obviously, it would have to be explored a little bit further, but right now, we have economic development in the administrative suite, and our economic development specialist is probably, is in the office, though likely soon to be occupied by the assistant town manager. So while that individual is gonna probably end up bouncing around a couple times in this building, as soon as we can find a permanent location for that division, because it'll roll into being a separate department, that's beneficial. The other is going back to this incremental process, kinda like I talked about at the beginning. We have upcoming staff needs that are quickly going to exceed the capacity of this building, and we don't have that luxury of stopping operations. So we're trying to figure out the balance. Ultimately, whatever direction we do go, we'll have to hire licensed architects to go through the fine-tooth detail, figuring out all the mechanicals and everything else before we begin any sort of construction. But in terms of the process, really begin the design processes this year with the short-term retrofit. The best-case scenario would be to potentially begin construction on the new building and the police addition in 26, which when, if the new construction for the new building on campus was completed by '27, then we could start the funding processes for the first-floor renovation in one year, and then do the funding for the second-floor renovation the following year. Obviously, the completion dates for those would be potentially a year behind that. But that is one opportunity. Do you have any other questions or comments?
I think, just a comment from me, I think the space that we have now, I know that, okay, right across from HR is that there's a suite that we store records in, some of that seems like it could be compiled into the conference room they have closer by. That's an entire section suite that we're not utilizing, and there's a lot of open space in there. I think we haven't maximized that like we should. That's an entire section in the town hall currently. I don't know if any fellow commissioners have been in there, but that's an empty space that just basically got a few file cabinets and stuff in there. We can figure out how to compact that and utilize that entire section of town hall.
Yeah, those file cabinets are a little more complicated. Those are fire safes, and you can't congregate them because they'll go through the floor. Those will probably end up having to move into like a temporary structure or something maintaining on campus. But as you see in this drawing here, the short term would be to capitalize on those two offices and then put cubicles in the back portion for economic development and engineering to potentially move into that location.
Michael, can you help me to understand? When I think of economic development, I think they would need to be close to planning. Can you help me understand why economic development would not be close to planning rather than trying to move them downtown?
Eventually, economic development's gonna roll into a separate independent department. And while there is collaboration, interaction amongst all of the departments, it's a lot easier today with today's technology. As it is right now, there's, we have regular meetings with economic development, regular staff meetings to keep them up to date, and then I have regular meetings with Shannon Johnson, as well as Teresa Piner. But for the most part, the two divisions operate, the day-to-day operations pretty much separately. Furthermore, our economic development specialist has been doing a terrific job about going up, meeting with other entities such as Wake County Economic Development, business owners, property owners, to really get a good understanding of what we need to do within the town to bring in these new industries and corporations, as opposed to being in town hall all day.
Any other questions, comments?
I certainly don't feel very comfortable about this. I'm gonna have, I'll look at it some more, but I don't love it much.
Yeah, I need to look at it more, too.
I'd also like to know what the price tag is on these proposed renovations.
I'll just say, I wasn't here before, obviously, you guys talk about the funds, the amount of funds that were spent, but just looking at this now, I do feel like we're jumping the gun. If we have space that's not being utilized right now, I can't see why we would need to start reconstruction, reconstruction and tearing walls down and whatnot if we haven't reached that point. Like you said, we have a lot of other buildings that we need to focus on, and this one just seems like it's too much, too quick. It's not needed at this time.
Any other questions, comments?
I've got a comment that might be helpful. So in your FY25 budget, even though all those requests there, the only funding in there is for the short-term retrofit. So we put money in there to utilize this space we've got for the cubicle walls, move storage. We expected you were gonna need time, and you have demonstrated that by the feedback we got, that there's a lot of moving parts here, you have a lot of balls in the air. This is the first time, really, you all have had a chance to talk about this, so just want you all to understand that the FY25 budget is only doing that short-term retrofit. It does not include beginning the design process.
Okay, thank you.
This may be totally off that, but how can we better utilize that section where the HR stuff is stored at for staffing purposes to give more space?
Yeah, that goes back to...
We have, just currently where we're at.
Yeah, that goes back to this right here. The only changes that you'd have is all of those file cabinets would have to be moved into either a Conex that's stored on-site, which would have to be a fully-conditioned storage container, or some other mechanism. And we would, in this scenario, it's paint, carpet, and trim, utilizing those two cubicles or those two offices. There is a wall right here to the door, and then putting cubicles in this space. And then this is what Joe has previously referred to as the Wakeland Hall of Fame. A lot of that temporarily would move downstairs to the display cabinets and into the foyer, and we would put cubicles in all of that space as well. That's the easier, that's the short-term, quick fix that Joe had mentioned. That's what's in this budget, as well as potentially putting, potentially getting cubicles to further put in for the planning suite, one additional cubicle within the area near where our GIS, or our planner two sits for the transportation planner, and then eventually eliminating our conference room, which changes the need for the conference room onto that foyer area.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
We're handing out copies of the staff report and the resolution and the ordinance that was emailed to you, and I just wanna make sure you have a physical copy of that. I'm not gonna go through the full presentation that I've done over the past several meetings, so this will really just cut to the chase. So as we mentioned last time, you have what we think are, over the next seven years, justifiably $50 million worth of transportation improvements, both for vehicular and pedestrian needs. What we have, what we mentioned at your regular meeting is a recommendation to phase this approach for a couple reasons. The first reason is your most pressing needs, the ones that need funding, are those first two projects, the North Arundel Access and Operational Improvements, and the Jones Street Connector and Proctor/Pierce Roundabout. The other reason we mentioned phasing it is you have a lot of other needs out there that you have not had the opportunity to have a discussion about. I think the most pressing is if you wanna consider a park bond, you will have a discussion on that here at your second work session, but again, not knowing if you wanna take out a park bond and what that amount is for. As well as, while you won't need a bond referendum for it, you've got some other looming expenses with not only the fire EMS station built next to this facility, but also Fire Stations Two and Three. And so that's the other reason for the phase approach of just take out what you need to construct those two projects, as well as give you some free board in case those projects go over, or if you wanna focus on another project or incorporate some other pedestrian projects. So what we put before you is a recommendation, $20 million transportation bond, and if you're interested in moving forward, we put in front of you a resolution and an ordinance, which if you are interested in placing it on the November ballot, you will need to adopt that tonight. If you're not ready to do that, just understand that the North Arundel project will not begin construction any sooner than the summer of '26. So we remain available to answer any questions that you've got. We also have with us the town's financial advisor and Davenport Associates, as well as the bond counsel with Sands Anderson.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Baxter?
Yeah, so we've got a $20 million bond without $20 million worth of projects selected for consideration. We have Project One and Project Two highlighted there. I realize that there is going to be some kind of increase in costs, but I doubt there's going to be the $7.5 million in a couple of years, at least I hope not. And so I'm, I'm thinking, do we want to add projects to this right now? And then if there are overages, we can address that as we go through the construction process? Because if we have, if we have deficiencies in what we have with the $20 million, we can always consider raising taxes, because this is already going to raise taxes, but we're also paying for bond counsel and financial advisors and everything else. Instead of maybe leaving those on the table, I realize that you say that we can go back and choose projects as we go along, but I would rather have a clearer understanding of what projects we are attempting. And then I would like to, one question that I've had in the past, and it was just brought up again recently by a member of the community, is the median for the North Arundel widening project. I'd like to have an understanding from Chief Perry, if he could, how that median is going to affect a fire truck's ability to reach a site if it can't make a left-hand turn into a structure or an area.
So I may have to phone a friend with Chris Ray, but it's my understanding that this is a four-inch median, which can be traversed by a fire apparatus if the need be. We had some of those conversations, even, Chris, and I'm looking for, don't let me tell wrong, but even the curbing is arranged so that fire apparatus or emergency vehicle could cross over that should the need occur.
So not just a fire vehicle, but also EMS or potentially a police car if need be?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Miles?
None at this time, sir.
Commissioner Harrison?
No questions.
Commissioner Clark?
None at this time.
Commissioner Davis? So, options for the board. Move forward with the adoption of the ordinance, delay North Arundel being again construction no sooner than summer '26, to the Jones Connector no sooner than summer '27. Can you explain to me, Joe, a little bit before we move forward?
Before we move forward, can you please explain a little bit? Get a better understanding, $7 million over, help me understand that again?
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons for it. So North Arundel Access and Operational Improvements, our known cost is $4 million. That's assuming that Campo is gonna go 50/50 with us on the overage. We have a verbal commitment from them, but nothing in writing. There's no guarantee that they have to do that. They have, they sound confident, and they've done this in the past, but if they don't move forward for whatever reason, that number goes up to 8.5 million, okay? So we're trying to, we're trying to buy you some flexibility not knowing what Campo will support. So that's one part of it. The other two things that we're trying to give you all coverage on is, this has been a construction market unlike any of us have ever seen. And while we feel as though we've put in enough contingencies and try to plan for enough budgets, you even saw most recently on Monday night where we had a project that we had to bring back to you, and we had to get extra money. So we're trying to cover for anything that might come up when we go to bid. And then the last thing that we're trying to give you all latitude on is, let's just, let's think more optimistically. Let's say North Arundel comes in close to four, Jones Street Connector comes in close to eight, you have latitude to draw on those funds, up to $20 million for other transportation-related projects, if you so choose. And they don't even necessarily need to be those that are up there on the table, but if you want to draw down, you have those funds available. If you don't wanna draw down, you don't have to use them. If you don't draw down, there will not be a tax implication.
So you're basically saying we'd rather have it and not need it than to need it and not have it?
I think that's a good way to characterize it.
Any other questions, comments?
But if we have extra, we, after these two projects, it still is not going to be enough to, say, address the stormwater concerns that we have on Gannon. And with the last couple of storms, I think that we've all been reminded of how much of an issue not having our stormwater situation dialed in is. And you also have commented that we are currently kind of getting some pushback from, was it the state saying that we haven't addressed the stormwater issues like we need to?
Yeah, that's, that pushback, specifically the notice of deficiency, is not really related to the situation you're describing. The stormwater component of that project number three is about $2 million.
So, go ahead.
Commissioner Harris?
So, we could, it is possible that with this, if we were to have overage, we could pull out stormwater from this big project and make it its own separate project without, because we wouldn't have enough, we possibly wouldn't have enough to cover the $10 million or the $11 million, 11.2, but we may have enough to support a smaller version of one of these projects, because we understand that these are priority projects to do them.
Yeah, I would wanna phone a friend, but the way, the way, and so I'm asking, I'm probably thinking Ashley, or maybe even Bobby on this, but the way that I read your ordinance, the authorization, is to make street and sidewalk improvements inclusive of things like drainage, because they go hat in hand. And so I think, again, I need someone with more expertise than me on this, to say, could you, could you, could you... than me on this, to say, could you parcel out the stormwater component, knowing that it's necessary in order to build the road, and knowing that it was called out as an acceptable item in the bond referendum?
We have a friend?
Phone a friend.
Hey, friend.
Hello. Joe's right. These will be called Streets and Sidewalks bonds, so anything street and sidewalk related, you can spend the money on. You know, should you authorize $20 million in Streets and Sidewalk bonds, and you change your mind about the priority of the projects, you can switch the projects around. Streets and Sidewalk bonds are great, because you can spend that money all day, every day, on everything, because the projects never run out, as long as they are related to streets, sidewalks, and the infrastructure therein.
So basically, like so many projects we've seen earlier, like your Gil Street, your connectivity that we're working on for us, like...
Mike, check.
Gosh, okay. Basically sidewalk projects that we've seen, that money could potentially be utilized for that. I think we've been given some examples, so that's... Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hold on, friend. Any more questions, comments? Thank you. So what's the pleasure of the board? Move forward to adopt a resolution and ordinance?
Is this discussion part?
Well, yeah, we always discuss it.
Oh, no, I just think for me now, finding out that we can use it a little bit different, there's a little bit more flexibility in utilizing the funds, I may feel a bit more comfortable going that much over.
I'm...
Please.
I'm sorry. Yes, I...
Commissioner Harrison?
I am pleased with the explanation of why we would need to take out so much, because I was a little bit concerned about that with the projects, understanding Campo and our flexibility, because we're not, this issue isn't going to go away. We're not going to not have a lack of streets and sidewalk issues as we continue to grow. So, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any more comments? Discussion. Commissioner Baxter? Mike check?
I think it's on.
So when you go under the other tax considerations on the far right-hand side of page 76, I think you just need to go back one slide. When there is a question mark and it says "park bond," I'm assuming that that would mean that FY '28, we would be considering a park bond, and, or is that not how I should be reading this?
I mean, I'll tell you why I put it under FY '28, and then you can either decide whether you agree or disagree with my rationale. You all have a healthy Parks and Rec impact fee balance that I think can justifiably be used to purchase land. So I don't think you need money to purchase land. You will need money to activate those spaces, meaning like, once you have the land, what do you turn them into? So I'm just making things up to make a point. If you turn them into a softball-baseball complex, or you turn them into soccer fields, I don't know, I'm just making them up as a point, you're not going to be in a position, in my opinion, to be ready to do that until FY '28, because you've got to go through the land acquisition process first, and then you've got to go through the design process. And that design process, particularly when it comes to parks, has a heavy community engagement. So could you move faster than FY '28? Possibly, but I don't think so. I don't think you would have a consideration before then, but it is possible. And then something else I just thought of, even if you did have a bond referendum that moved faster, I don't see you drawing those funds immediately. So I'm feeling okay with '28, could it be '27? Yeah, I can see that.
I just wanted to understand why it was listed as other tax considerations.
My big thing is, I didn't want you all to bite off too much of a bond referendum just on transportation, and close your avenues on parks and fire stations.
And sometimes, looking at the history of some of our surrounding communities, when you put different bonds on, different projects on the one bond, it may... It's more, I guess, acceptable in some of the communities I've seen. You know, if you just did, if you would combine them, say like Parks, Barn, and Transportation on the ballot, just have one issue on the ballot, that's just my thought on that. So we're trying to get this on the ballot for this upcoming election.
I have a question on the ordinance, 2024-46. Just help me understand the education campaign part of it, I'm looking at $60,000. What does that consist of? I mean...
That would be just hiring a consultant to educate the public on the project. We can't promote it, they can't promote it, but it would be just informational-type flyers, maybe creation of a website, just to inform the voters on what the projects that will be associated with the bond, just kind of be informative, not promoting it, and just educating the public on the proposed projects.
Thank you.
I'll continue with that. How are we going to parcel out that $60,000? Because it sounds like there's several components to that education piece, and I'd like to have an understanding, like, is, are we going to be building a website? I mean, because we're building a website for a very short period of time, how much is that going to cost? What type of, I mean, I'm assuming that we're probably going to be doing some aerial photography, like, what is that going to cost? I mean, is this $60,000 a number that was just put in as a placeholder, so that we have enough money to move forward with the project, or do you have an actual breakdown of what the different components cost?
It was more so a placeholder for right now, there's no detail on the breakdown like you're referring to.
Do we have an idea of what other communities who have run successful bond bids have spent, especially in communities where they're running like a $20 million bond, and have perhaps a similarly sized municipality?
I've heard numbers around 40 to 50, like, I think, Fuqua-Garner, things like, local municipalities like that have been around 40 to 50.
All right, and so are we going to, I'd like to see the invoices as we move through this process for what the different components of this education campaign are going to cost us? Because $60,000, while I understand that nothing is free and things aren't cheap, it's still $60,000. Can I have some consensus, or some other folks to either say, "That's a good idea, Shannon," or "That's not a good idea, Shannon," just so that Bobby has direction from someone else besides me?
Well, I think with any project, we would like to see what's the ongoing cost of...
But we don't always get invoices.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So how would that update, what would that look like? I mean, in your...
Updates, budget updates, on project updates.
Project updates.
What we're spending the money on, where it's going.
Okay, does that sound reasonable?
So you're talking about something that we would get, when you say on a regular, something we would look at every month at a meeting, like, how often would we get that?
That's what I was asking, like, how does that look, how often, how frequently would we get that update?
Every time they get some money?
So I was asking what you...
Well, as we go through this process, can you give us a monthly update as far as what we have been spending as far as this bond campaign? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be good, especially, just even as far as education for us that are new, and this is the first time we have experienced putting a bond on the ballot, I would like to see kind of from start to finish how this all works and what it looks like.
I think it'll certainly help us if we move forward to a Parks and Rec bond.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, that too. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Concerns? Are we ready to adopt the resolution and ordinance?
Mayor, can I just take one minute to read through the resolution in its entirety, please? Thank you, thank you. Mayor.
I thought you read faster than that.
While she's reading, would that update be the same thing on, kind of like when we're giving our contracts and stuff like that, would that be updated as well?
You mean on the projects?
Yeah, the projects, once we start handing them out, can we get that regularly updated? I would love to see that. How are we passing it out? We ask the citizens, give us $20 million. I think we need to just kind of keep track of how it's being put out there.
And I do think that, you know, this is, this North Arundel has been quite an extensive project from my tenure, and I think, you know, the citizens want to see something to help alleviate some of this traffic, because it is a congestion point. And it also maybe helps some more development in that area. But as long as it's jammed like it is right now, it's, it would be difficult to proceed with any kind of development in that region, in my opinion.
Thank you for the extended time. I've finished, I've finished reading.
You finished?
Yes, I did, thank you.
You want to read it?
Out loud?
Yeah. Are we ready to adopt the resolution?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-22.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Are we going to be then adopting the ordinance afterwards? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Two separate.
Discussion? Commissioner Davis, do you have any discussion?
No, sir.
Commissioner Clark?
No, sir.
For any discussion? Commissioner Harrison?
No, sir.
Commissioner Miles?
None at this time, sir.
Commissioner Baxter? All right. Have a roll vote. Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Clark?
Favor.
Commissioner Baxter?
Favor.
Thank you, motion passes.
I would like to...
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-46.
We have another ordinance, a motion and a second, any discussion?
That we get updates as we move along with the projects that we requested on a monthly basis, that is to be ensured that it will take place, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none? Are we ready for a vote? Ordinance 2024-46.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I made the motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner Baxter, now we vote.
Where was I? No discussion, no discussion? Roll vote, Commissioner Baxter?
Favor.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Davis?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Favor, sir.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, do we have a second? All in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you.